Present. And then for transparency, I'm recusing myself from the vote tonight. I'm a resident of the area and I believe that the city and applicant deserves a fair chance at this hearing. So I will be recusing myself from the vote tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo, mic check.
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter, mic check.
There we go. Hit the right button.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair McConnell, mic check.
Good evening.
Thank you. Chair Bossert.
Test, test.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunn.
Check, check.
Thank you. And we will circle back to the last two and be able to start a meeting promptly at 7:00. Mic check for Commissioner Tomacek.
Check, check.
Thank you. Mic check for Commissioner Torres.
Testing.
Thank you. Chair Bossert, it is 7 o'clock. If you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we do the roll call, I'd like to mention that if you'd like to speak tonight, you can sign up at the table in the back of the room and Mr. Gurman can help you if you need any assistance. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Bossert.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner calling.
Excused.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Here.
Commissioner Zhang.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call is complete.
So we have a quorum tonight and the second alternate will be voting. That would be you, Commissioner Torres. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting of October 26th?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Chair Bossert.
Aye.
Chair Bossert is in favor. Vice Chair McConnell.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell is in favor. Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter is in favor. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn is in favor. Commissioner Tomacek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek is in favor. Commissioner Mayo.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayo is in favor. Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres is in favor. Complete.
The motion passes unanimously. And I need to let you know that due to COVID-19, comments were accepted electronically and via voicemail and were delivered to the Planning Commission and posted to the Public Agenda Packet prior to the meeting. Those who wish to comment and have signed up in advance per the online guidelines will be called in order to speak during the live meeting. We'd also like to mention that we will be doing the live testimony in advance of the voice messages. There is only one item on tonight's agenda, and that is Item 3A, a public hearing and recommendation to the City Council on annexation, comprehensive plan designation, and establishment of a zoning for a portion of West 84th Avenue, a portion of West 88th Avenue, and a 2.4 acre parcel privately owned land within Parcel B to planned unit development, rezoning parcels A, B, C, D, and E to PUD, a preliminary development plan for parcels, and a master official development or Parcel A. At this time, I'd like to ask Patrick Caldwell to begin his presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Caldwell. I'm a senior planner with the city's planning division. And other city staff are here this evening, and I want to introduce them in person. Rita McConnell, Planning Manager, John McConnell, Principal Planner, Kristen Decker, Deputy City Attorney, Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner, Heath Klein, Transportation Engineer, Dave Downing, Community Development Director, Nicole Ankeny, Senior Landscape Architect, Julie Keeler, Utilities Engineering Manager, Sarah Borgers, Water Resources and Quality Manager, Alex Gann, Engineer, Heather Otterstetter, Stormwater Coordinator, Nathan Inc., Senior Engineer, and Michael Wright, Principal Engineer. Virtually present will be Dave Losman, City Engineer, Scott Wimmer, Fire Lieutenant, Melanie Walter, Senior Engineer, and Aaron Kirchner, Senior Engineer. Slide 1. I guess we're on slide 2. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and the public notices mailed, posted, and published in the Westminster window are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Posted notices exceed the minimum quantity required. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 843 property owners within 500 feet of each of the five parcels under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website and sent an emailed copy of the notice to an email list that we have compiled from persons that commented on this proposal. Next slide, please. Here is a map of the overall proposed uplands development. The parcels are labeled with a bold red letter. All five parcels of the uplands development, Parcels A, B, C, D, and E, will be considered tonight. Next slide, please. One of the development applications that was filed with the proposed uplands development is the annexation of two sections of public right-of-way and one section of private land with an adjacent portion of right-of-way. The first section of public right-of-way is along the northern boundary of Parcel A, containing only the right-of-way for 88th Avenue. The proposed zoning designation would be Planned Unit Development, or PUD, and the comprehensive plan designation would be T-Mund. Annexing the right-of-way is critical to ensure that 88th Avenue is constructed to city standards and that the city would oversee any work conducted within the right-of-way. Next slide, please. The second section of public right-of-way is along the southern boundary of Parcel A, containing only the right-of-way for 88th Avenue. The proposed zoning designation would be PUD, and the comprehensive plan designation would be T-Mund. Again, annexing the right-of-way is critical to ensure that 84th Avenue is constructed to city standards and that the city would oversee any work conducted within the right-of-way. Next slide, please. The last section that is proposed to be annexed contains both private property and a small portion of the Lowell Boulevard right-of-way that is not in the city. Private property contains only property within Parcel B that is owned by the petitioner. A section of Lowell Boulevard that would be annexed is directly adjacent to the east boundary of Parcel B near 82nd Avenue. The proposed zoning designation would be PUD, and the comprehensive plan designation would be R5. Annexing the private land ensures that the city can protect the view corridor as shown on the 2013 comprehensive plan, and annexing the right-of-way is critical to ensure that Lowell Boulevard is constructed to city standards and that the city would oversee any work conducted within the right-of-way. Next slide, please. Another development application that was filed as a part of the proposed uplands development is the request for a rezoning of all five parcels from various zoning designations to planned unit development. This is a requirement of City Code Section 11-5-2. A property larger than two acres in size must be rezoned to either Planned Unit Development, Specific Plan District, or O1. Given the existing comprehensive plan designations, Planned Unit Development is the appropriate zoning designation for this proposed development. Next slide, please. The applicant has filed an application for a preliminary development plan, or PDP, that would regulate the uses and development of all five parcels. There are five planning areas within the overall development. Each are separately designated to match the designations in the comprehensive plan. Overall, the PDP allows a maximum of 2,350 dwelling units. The PDP proposes to designate 34.3 acres of physical land for the public land dedication, and 6.35 acres for view corridors. This totals 40.65 acres. Parcel A would be developed with a village center where a mix of commercial and residential uses will occur, and a village residential area where no commercial uses will occur. A maximum of 1,531 dwelling units could be constructed in Parcel A in a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily units. Parcel B is proposed for only residential development with a maximum of 96 dwelling units in either single-family detached units or single-family attached units. Parcel C is split between a commercial mixed-use development and standalone residential development. A maximum of 617 dwelling units could be constructed in Parcel C in a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily units. Parcel D is proposed for two separate areas, one with office alone at 3.1 acres, and another with residential uses with a maximum of 94 dwelling units, neither single-family detached or single-family attached units. Parcel E is not proposed for any development other than as private open space with proposed trail access. Next slide, please. The last development application being considered tonight is for a master official development plan or Parcel A. A master ODP is not a defined term. However, the city has used this tool to establish a more detailed roadmap for larger, more complex development plans, ones in which a typical PDP does not accommodate. For example, master ODPs have been provided for the other two T-Mund projects in Westminster where additional finite clarity is needed to ensure integration of the mixture of land uses at the block scale. It is essential to have this type of document to ensure compliance with T-Mund guidelines while not demanding the level of detail that a typical site-specific ODP would require for a large and multi-family development. Parcel A is designated T-Mund by the comprehensive plan. Master ODP provides the framework for the mixed-use neighborhood and designates which portion of the site will contain the village center where commercial uses will occur, and the village residential where no commercial uses will occur. On Parcel A, a total of 21 acres of land would be dedicated to the city for the public land dedication. A maximum of 1,531 dwelling units could be constructed in Parcel A in a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily units. The multifamily units would only be allowed in the village center, which is concentrated near the intersection of West 86th Avenue and Federal Boulevard. Next slide, please. Section 11-5-1 of the Westminster Municipal Code specifies that all annexations shall be controlled by the Colorado Revised Statutes. Where all three annexations, staff finds the contiguity requirement is met, and where applicable, a community of interest exists. Next slide, please. Section 11-514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing new preliminary development plans. Criteria 1 through 3 require that the PDP conform with the city's comprehensive plan and all city codes, ordinances, and policies, that the PDP is of sound, creative, innovative, and efficient planning principles, and that any exceptions from city code must be warranted and clearly identified on the PDP. Staff finds that the PDP is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The PDP proposes uses and development standards consistent with all of the land use designations for the various parcels. Regarding Criteria 2, staff finds that sound planning principles are demonstrated through the placement of public lands and the protection of mountain view corridors. The PDP does not include any exceptions from standard code requirements as currently presented. Should exceptions be desired in the future, the PDP will need to be amended and will be brought before the Planning Commission and the City Council for consideration in accordance with the procedures in city code. Next slide, please. Criteria 4 through 6 require that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area, that the PDP provides the development and surrounding areas from protection of potentially adverse influences, and that the PDP has no significant adverse impacts upon existing or future land uses, nor upon the future development of the immediate area. Staff finds that the PDP is generally compatible and harmonious with surrounding developments. Commercial uses and taller residential uses on Parcel A would be focused along Federal Boulevard. Within Parcel A, single-family uses would be planned along Lowell Boulevard, along West 84th Avenue, and along West 88th Avenue, adjacent to existing single-family uses. Multifamily uses on Parcel C are adjacent to existing multifamily. Parcel D includes a good transition of residential uses and office uses adjacent to existing multifamily residential and office uses. Regarding Criteria 5 and 6, staff finds that the PDP does provide the surrounding areas from potentially adverse influences from within the development, and that it will not have adverse impacts. Masonry walls and setbacks will be utilized where appropriate, and the proposed uses will not overburden the existing adjacent infrastructure so long as all identified infrastructure improvements are constructed per the phasing plan in the PDP as a developer obligation. Next slide, please. Criteria 7 through 10 require that transportation access points are designed in a safe and harmonious manner, that the city may require right-of-way or other public lands as a condition of the PDP approval, that the performance standards are included and offer a reasonable expectation for future ODPs to meet WMC 11-5-15 standards for approval, and that the applicant is not in default or does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. Staff finds that the proposed access points requested in the PDP are designed in a safe manner, and that improvements have been identified and shown the applicant to construct. The PDP will not preclude the future dedication of additional right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to dedicate 34 acres of land for public parks and public open space, and 6.35 acres for view corridors as public land dedication. This totals 40.65 acres. A cash-in-Lu B would be paid for the remainder of the PLD owed. For Criteria 9 and 10, staff finds that the PDP includes the necessary performance standards, and that the applicant is not in default and has no outstanding obligations to the city. Next slide, please. Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing new official development plans. Criteria 1 through 4 require that the ODP conform with all city codes, ordinances, and policies, that the ODP is in conformance with the PDP, that the PDP is of sound, creative, innovative, and efficient planning principles, and that any exceptions from city code must be warranted and clearly identified on the ODP. Staff finds that the master ODP is in conformance with all city codes, ordinances, and policies, that the master ODP does conform to the PDP, that the master ODP as presented tonight currently reflects adherence to the city's T-Mund design guidelines, and that there are currently no exceptions proposed. Should exceptions to the T-Mund guidelines be requested in the future, the PDP and the ODP will need to be amended and will be brought before the Planning Commission and the City Council for consideration in accordance with the procedures in the city code. Next slide, please. Criteria 5 through 8 require that the plan is compatible with development in the surrounding area, that the plan provides the development and surrounding areas from protection of potentially adverse influences, that the plan has no significant adverse impacts upon existing or future land uses, nor upon the future development of the immediate area, and that the plan provides for the safe, convenient, and harmonious grouping of structures and uses, and the appropriate relation of space to intended use. Staff finds that the plan is generally compatible with existing adjacent uses. Commercial uses and taller residential uses would be focused along Federal Boulevard. The PDP does provide the surrounding areas from potentially adverse influences from within the development, and it will not have adverse impacts. The proposed uses will not overburden the existing adjacent infrastructure so long as all identified infrastructure improvements are constructed per the phasing plan in the PDP as a developer obligation. Regarding Criteria 8, the master ODP as currently presented provides for harmonious grouping of structures and uses, and staff finds that more details will be provided with future ODP amendments. Should exceptions to the T-Mund standards be requested for things such as setbacks, lot sizes, or the placement and relation of structures and uses in the future, the PDP and ODP will need to be amended and will be brought before the Planning Commission and the City Council for consideration in accordance with the procedures in the city code. Next slide, please. Criteria 9 through 12 require that buildings and lots are planned in accordance with sound design principles. The architecture is compatible throughout the development and with adjacent uses, that fences, walls, and landscaping are provided where needed, and that all landscaping is in conformance with the city code requirements. Staff finds that the master ODP provides a concept for how the T-Mund design guidelines will be utilized to review the future proposed site-specific ODPs. A concept of the intended architectural character is provided, and fences and walls are shown where needed. Landscaping that is shown is appropriate for the level of detail that is expected on a master ODP. Staff expects that more details will be provided with future ODP amendments. Should exceptions to T-Mund standards be requested for things such as setbacks, lot sizes, architectural standards, or landscaping in the future, the PDP and ODP will need to be amended and will be brought before the Planning Commission and the City Council for consideration in accordance with the procedures in the city code. Next slide, please. Criteria 13 through 17 require that the existing and proposed streets are adequate to carry the traffic, that the streets and access points are designed in a safe and convenient manner, that pedestrian movement is designed in a safe and logical manner, that the existing and proposed utility and storm drainage systems are adequate to serve the development, and that the applicant is not in default or does not have outstanding obligations to the city. Staff finds that the streets, as designed and proposed, will have the capacity to accommodate the additional traffic if the identified roadway infrastructure improvements are constructed per the phasing plan in the PDP as a developer obligation. Streets and access points are shown in a conceptual design, and staff expects that more details will be provided with future ODP amendments. Pedestrian paths for the roadways have been designed in a safe and logical manner. If the identified improvements to the utility and storm drainage system as shown in the phasing plan of the PDP are constructed, the system should be adequate to serve the development. The applicant is not in default and does not have outstanding obligations to the city. Next slide, please. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to review the proposed annexations, the rezoning, the preliminary development plan, and the master official development plan, and that the Planning Commission recommend that City Council additionally approve, 1, the annexation, comprehensive plan designation, and establishment of zoning for the right-of-way annexation properties, and the Parcel B annexation property to PUD with the conditions set forth in the summary of recommendations in the agenda. to PUD with the conditions set forth in the summary of recommendations in the agenda memo. The rezoning of the parcels to PUD with conditions set forth in summary of staff recommendations in the agenda memo. Number three, the PDP with the conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations in the agenda memo. And number four, the master ODP with the conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations in the agenda memo. Next slide, please. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the City Council's strategic plan goals of foster and maintain a beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city, and advance the city's long-term sustainability to provide ongoing excellence in city services, and a well-planned community that meets the needs of residents now and in the future. The plan provides new sites for public parks and recreation, and proposed improvements to the city's street network. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. And it is my understanding you'd like to have commissioners hold their questions until after the applicant has made his presentation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Handlin from 1150 Delaware Street, Denver, Colorado. I'm a principal in the Uplands. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We've been working an awful long time, four years, to make it here to this moment. As you will see from my team here this evening, our singular focus has been not just to meet the city's goals and standards, but to exceed them whenever possible. Uplands is paying its own way, and it's also paying its own way forward, or paying its way forward. After you've heard from our team and all the public speakers, I encourage you to ask us about open space, and density, and traffic, or anything else that remains a question for you, or you need further data or backup. You're going to hear lots of information tonight and lots of opinions. But we're here to explain with loads of research, experts, and facts for you. In that regard, I'd like to just give you three facts to hold on to during tonight's presentation. One, the city approved 778 acre-feet of water for this project. They approved it in 2007, reaffirmed the same budget in 2013, and we're using less than that amount. That amount, 778 acre-feet, remains in the city's water plan, in the city's water supply reserved for this project. Number two, Uplands limits its residential unit count to 2,350 units. That is 1,500 units less than allowed, a 40% reduction from the 2013 comprehensive. And number three, 2,500 trees to be planted throughout the site and inside Uplands parks, view corridors, and paths in order to make the area greener and cooler for all the neighbors. And yes, the 778 acre-feet of water is enough to irrigate all of the plant material in the site, including those trees. So please remember those numbers: 778 acre-feet of water, 1,500 residential units less than allowed, and 2,500 new trees. You'll have an opportunity to ask us about these and other issues during your Q&amp;A segment, whether that be tonight or tomorrow. With that, I'd like and pleased to introduce our team, Marcus Pockner, Bonnie Nishelik, and Chad Ellington to present this project for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marcus Pockner, 130 Rampart Way in Denver. I am a community engagement and land use consultant for Uplands. As you see on the next slide, I'll actually wait for our slides to come up by May. If you could go to the next slide, please. This shows a recent rendering, an updated rendering, that Jeff just talked about that shows the most common or most updated illustrative of the site. Looking here to the north in the foreground, Lowell at the bottom of the picture, you can see the parks as planned drawn into the site. And we will come back to this image, but I wanted to be sure and highlight this image, and we'll come back to it in a few minutes. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a little bit of the roadmap of what we're going to cover tonight. I'll be giving an overview of Uplands and talking about the related community benefits. We will talk about the principles and the priorities we heard from public outreach. We will then focus on these applications. As you all know, we had a previously approved land use plan amendments back in February 2020, and then the four related items before you tonight: the annexation, the rezonings, the preliminary development plan, and parcel A master official development plan. Next slide, please. Uplands is a community design... If we can go to the next slide, please. Uplands is a community design from a collective vision. This collective vision has been shaped by literally hundreds of community discussions. Next slide. Uplands is a 234-acre, medium-density community connected by parks, paths, and public spaces. Uplands will provide over 300 units of affordable housing and 47 acres of open space. Next slide. There is unquestioned that we have a housing crisis across the Front Range. Next slide, please. As you see here, here are some media stories about that housing crisis. There are skyrocketing prices and a true lack of both affordable and attainable housing. But it's not just the case across the Front Range. The crisis also resides here in Westminster. As you see on the bottom quote on the front page, Westminster had the highest median rent for a one-bedroom apartment at $1,650 per month. Next slide. This slide, this next slide, shows how we got into this situation. The dark blue lines are single-family detached homes, where the light blue lines are multifamily units. You see in that red circle from 2003 to 2014, 82% of Westminster homes were single-family detached homes. We then shifted, frankly, overcompensated, and in the last five years, 71% of Westy homes have been multifamily units. The next slide shows that basically the market has failed to provide missing middle housing typology with segmented prices and housing for multiple generations. On the left, you see those single-family, 82% of single-family homes. Large lawns, large resource consumption, and expensive price points. On the right is focused on multifamily that creates more development pressures and community concern with density. The entire image is the solution, effectively a picture of the Uplands plan. We provide attainable housing by design, intentionally providing a full spectrum of housing with varied price points, and we will allow and holistically establish an inclusive community. Next slide, please. The Upland Plan establishes a community that will make housing attainable to the first-time buyer, to a renter, and to seniors. We will meet or exceed Westminster housing goals by including 300-plus units of affordable housing and 150-plus units of cottages for workforce housing. Next slide, please. Our second planning ethos at Uplands is that we must lead on sustainability. We will absolutely reduce surface and ambient temperatures by planning approximately 25 homes and 2,500 trees and a native plant pallet. All of the homes will come with solar-ready roofs and will be standard feature on our single-family detached homes. Next slide, please. In the life of a city, folks, in the life of this city, we have reached a critical juncture on water. We must help ease the burden on existing ratepayers. That is exactly what we want to accomplish at Uplands. We are intentionally designing conservation annually. Annually, we will save over 32 million gallons of water compared to our water budget. With all of the best practices you see on the screen, Uplands homes will use 30% less water than the average Westminster home. In addition, we will provide $39 million in sewer and tap fees. Next slide, please. The Uplands collective vision also focused on mobility. Uplands will provide safer multimodal corridors, including safer roadways and intersections. We will establish a mobility hub at the Village Center, as Patrick mentioned, which will provide bike and car shares, shuttle services, and scooters. Next slide. We are addressing our own mobility, site mobility challenges, and also all the edges. As you all know, this is Lowell from 84th to 86th. It is an incredibly dangerous existing condition. The next slide here details our revised solution for Lowell. You'll get to see this in more detail in a minute. But this is indicative of the multimodal improvements that we have detailed in the PDP. These are remarkable enhancements for all mobility platforms and for Shaw Heights neighbors. Next slide. I specifically want to address parks and open space. At Uplands, for the first time in 100 years, the public will have access to 47 acres of publicly accessible parks, view corridors, and Uplands parks. This is 20% of the site, exceeding Westminster's goals. Uplands will meet the public land dedication requirement by providing 40 acres of dedicated land and paying between $5 million and $8 million in cash and loot. That range is based on the fair market value of the land. Next slide. The public land dedication at Uplands is a radical change for our adjoining neighbors. If you look at this slide, according to the Trust for Public Lands, the surrounding neighbors in Shaw Heights are in a deficit of public parks. If you looked at the left side of the screen, you see that they are considered high or very high priority because they do not live within a 10-minute walk to a park. Then on the right side, when you see the implementation of the Uplands Park Plan, 1,300 people are moved out of the high-need category. Uplands is providing parks and public spaces to the benefit of our residents and our neighbors alike. Next slide, please. In addition to the PLD, and Patrick mentioned this as well, as requested by the community, we are forever providing two critical and historic view corridors on the site. As you all know, parcel D, parcel B on the left, and then parcel D. The next slide shows them in our kind of PDP image. If you could go to the next slide, it shows them in our build form, and it shows both the sunset view, if you will, and the downtown view corridor at 84th looking back downtown. Those are augmented by additional PLD and forever preserved for all our residents. Next slide, please. Finally, I want to say, we have to, we all know that development must pay its own way. The staff report was very clear that this is a fiscally neutral in that no money is required from the city for this project. But the economic output is estimated at $1.8 billion over the construction period, and 655 permanent jobs will exist during construction. As importantly, this will also generate $183 million annually to Adams County taxes. Next slide, and we'll transition to community engagement. We implemented, and you can go to the next slide. Thank you very much. We implemented a strategic outreach philosophy, working closely with our neighborhood organizations, and then expanding to our community and regional organizations. It doesn't matter if the comments were made in support or opposition. It was the substance, it was the manner, it was the way, the nature of the comments that influenced our planning process. The next slide shows that in total, we've conducted over the last four years 216 meetings with these different area groups to really focus on this plan. We've delivered 8,000 flyers, 4,000 emails, we've had 947 downloads from our website, and the planning, virtual planning platform that we created. All of that resulted in one community vision for Uplands. Next slide. We have been absolutely relentless in seeking engagement and feedback. Here are the priorities that we heard from the community and what you have heard me describe tonight. Priorities focused on open space, resources, home density, and traffic, the top four there. By incorporating these priorities into our planning applications, Uplands meets or exceeds the city goals for affordable housing, senior housing, parks, public land dedication, and water usage. Now we'll transition to the next slide. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll focus on the applications before you. Next slide, please. This is the city process that you're all very familiar with, the previous land use plan amendments, and then the four items that we've all discussed before you. Next slide, please. And go ahead, thank you. As I mentioned, we were last here in February 2020. We talked about these five parcels. This is the comprehensive land plan that you all know very well. On the right-hand side, you'll see the land use designations that correspond to each of our five parcels. You certainly know the larger parcel, parcel A, is a T-Mund designation. And then I've also shown and read there parcel B is R5. Ladies and gentlemen, I will transition this to my next slide and last slide. Jeff already highlighted that the overall reduction of 1,500 units from what is allowed by these comp plan designations. If you can go to the next slide, though, I wanted to be sure and come back to you because we actually had some homework from February 2020. As you all recall, we had a great deal of discussion about parcel B, particularly parcel B2. And as a result of that, we promised at that hearing that we were going to cluster our homes on B2, provide more additional PLD and view corridors. And I want to show you that we have reduced this. It's reflected in the PLD. And we have a 40% reduction of units compared to what is allowed in the comp plan. Bonnie will now lead us forward on the additional applications.
Thank you, Marcus, Mr. Caldwell, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bonnie Nishelik with Norris Design at 1101 Bandic Street in Denver. If you could go to the next slide. And one more, please. Our first request this evening is for the annexation, for three annexation parcels which are identified here in orange and include a portion of 84th Avenue, 88th Avenue, and a portion of B and adjacent Lowell Boulevard. These three areas are the only three areas we are requesting annexation. The balance of the site is already within existing city limits. Next slide. As noted in the staff report, the proposed annexations shall occur pursuant to and be governed by the applicable section of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Next slide. Pursuant to these statutes, the proposed annexations include existing street right-of-ways regularly used by the residents of the city, are in an urban area and serve existing urban development, are integrated with existing city development, and meet contingency requirements. Next slide, please. These criteria are also met for 84th and for a portion, for the portion of parcel B and adjacent Lowell Boulevard. Our next request is for rezoning. Next slide, please. One more, please. This rezoning request applies to all five parcels as shown in orange in the upper-right map. Each of the parcels has existing zone districts that allow a variety of uses, such as single-family, commercial, and multifamily. Many of these existing zone districts do not comply with the intent of the approved comprehensive land use plan designations for the site. We are requesting all five parcels be rezoned to PUD to create community plans that comply with these existing comp plan land use designations. Next slide. As defined in code, PUD zoning allows, next slide, thank you, allows additional flexibility to create a unified innovative approach to mixed-use neighborhoods. Per city codes, sites that are undeveloped and more than two acres may only be rezoned to PUD-specific plan district and L1. In this case, only the PUD zone district aligns with the existing comp plan land use designations. Next slide. This evening, you all received a detailed summary document of our conformance with the standards for approval for the various applications you're hearing tonight. This includes the rezoning. Next slide. This rezoning request has the same approval criteria as the PDP. To save time, we'll walk through all those criteria at the time of the PDP. Our next request is for the preliminary development plan. This PDP also covers all five parcels as shown here in orange. The PDP is the first step in the PUD process. It establishes the overall vision and framework for the community, including public land dedication, land use, connectivity, and public improvements. All future official development plans will be reviewed against this PDP for compliance. Next slide. The first piece of this framework is view corridors. The existing comp plan identifies two view corridors within Uplands as shown here in green and parcel B and D. These six acres will be dedicated to the city to ensure preservation and access to these treasured spaces. Next slide. Each of the two view corridors are shown here in dark green. Parcel B on the left, looking northwest from 82nd and Lowell to the mountains, and parcel D on the right, looking south from 84th and Federal toward downtown Denver. The light green areas are additional public land dedication, while the yellow shows potential development areas. These are the best views from Uplands and were thoughtfully noted in the comprehensive plan. This PDP further protects these corridors. Next slide. One more, please. Here you can see an overlay of what development could look like in these yellow spaces. The homes are clustered, and the park and view corridors remain open as shown here in green. Next slide. The next piece of the framework is public land dedication, which are shown here in dark green. Working with city staff, parks- Working with city staff, parks, truck, and library staff, and throughout our community engagement process, key areas were identified to enhance the views we just discussed, create strong entries into the community, and place public spaces adjacent to the existing surrounding community. We staked these parks onsite and walked them with a dozen city officials to make sure they provide public access to the best views and provide parks on the edges of the Uplands community so they are easily accessible by the surrounding community. If you have questions on how each of these were selected, we're happy to walk through these during questions and answers. Next slide. Next slide, please. Here's a view looking southeast from 88th and Lowell. That's the intersection at the bottom of the screen of the proposed community, which includes 34 acres of public land dedication, six acres of view corridors, an additional seven acres of publicly accessible private parks, an estimated $5 to $8 million in cash and lieu based on market value of the land, and an estimated $2 million in park fees. Next slide. Here's that same view, but we've overlaid the Westminster Center Park onto our proposed 11-acre park. We're all familiar with Westminster Center Park, which is located just north of where we stand today. This 9.5-acre park, outlined in blue, provides a sense of scale for how big the proposed 11-acre park is at Uplands. Not only does the Westminster Center Park fit within this proposed park at 88th and Lowell, it also fits in the 10-acre park located just southeast at 86th and Federal, which is the green space just to the north of this park on the screen. Next slide. When looking at our public land dedication, it's also important to note our context. Just east of Uplands, residents enjoy access to Highland Hills Sports Complice and Camanish Park, which have a variety of active and passive recreation amenities. Existing residents already pay taxes for these amenities, and they are currently underutilized. Uplands improvements include bike and pedestrian connections along the length of 88th all the way from Lowell to this park. We have this great park amenity that people are already paying for. We want to get people to use it and get access to it in a more sustainable and car-free way. Next slide. These Highland Hills amenities include amenities similar to Westfield Village Park as shown here. On the left, we have Westfield Village Park, and the right, we have Highland Hills. For existing and future residents looking for the amenities of Westfield Village Park, Highland Hills provides a three-diamond baseball amenity, while the open lawn that exists at Westfield Park can be provided in both the 10 and 11-acre parks shown here in Uplands. All of the Westfield amenities can be provided within Uplands or directly adjacent to Uplands. Next slide. The next piece of framework identified in the PDP is the street network. This includes the overall collector network, some local streets, and potential access locations. This overall network is specifically designed to funnel traffic away from Lowell Boulevard while dispersing vehicular, bike, and pedestrian traffic throughout the community, creating a variety of connections. Next slide. One of the key pieces of this network is filling in the existing sidewalk gaps that exist around the Uplands site today, which are shown here in the red dashed line. The proposed transportation improvements fill these gaps adjacent to Uplands, providing much improved access to surrounding parks, shops, and amenities. Next slide. These bike and pedestrian connections are detailed on the plan shown here. This plan has a lot of improvements. We're happy to talk through the details of each of these. But key improvements include bike lanes on 88th, Lowell, and 84th, sidewalk on all internal and perimeter streets, and that multi-use child connection over to Camanish Park. Next slide. This next piece of the framework identified in the PDP is land use. Each land use was thoughtfully located to reflect the existing land uses surrounding Uplands. We have a diversity of land uses and home types that fit that missing middle of housing home, of housing Marcus mentioned earlier, while reflecting the diversity of uses surrounding the site today, including apartment and commercial uses. Here you see, single-family detached land uses in the pale yellow, which are allowed in much of Uplands, with the exception of a few parcels along Federal and the southwest corner of Zuni and 84th. Next slide. Next, we have where single-family attached homes are located, here in the medium yellow color. These are generally allowed in the same place as a single-family detached. As a direct result of our conversations during the comprehensive land use amendments two years ago, the bottom-left parcel, west of Lowell and south of Bradwell, is restricted to only single-family detached uses with this PDP. Next slide. Next, we have multifamily shown here in dark yellow. Multifamily homes are only allowed in these dark yellow parcels on either side of Federal and at 88th and Clay. These locations correspond with the existing comp plan designations in these areas, which encourage a mix of uses and relatively higher-density residential. Next slide. And finally, here in red, we show the three locations where commercial uses are allowed, on either side of Federal and 86th, and the southwest corner of 84th and Zuni. Again, these locations are consistent with the comp plan land use designations and are located to create transitions to arterial streets while commercial uses benefit from the additional drive-by traffic. You can see the red shading on the east side of Federal, which depicts existing commercial zoning and uses. The proposed commercial uses and locations honor and mirror this existing land use. Next slide. In addition to land use, the PDP also defines maximum building heights. Here you see how heights transition, very similar to the allowed land uses. In the lightest blue, three-story homes are allowed, which step up to four stories in the medium blue, and a maximum of five stories in the darkest blue along Federal, 88th, and at the southwest corner of 84th and Zuni. This is where the multifamily, mixed-use, and commercial uses are allowed. No buildings are permitted to be taller than five stories within Uplands. We'll get this into this in more detail in the master ODP, but additional restrictions are also placed along the eastern side of Lowell, creating a further restriction to a maximum of two stories on that edge. With that, I'll transition to Chad to walk through the public improvements associated with the PDP.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next slide, please. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chad Ellington. I'm at 1150 Delaware Street in Denver. I'm a partner and owner in the Westminster OC, the applicant tonight for the future Uplands neighborhood. This slide in front of you shows the extent of the offsite and onsite municipal water and sewer upgrades that Uplands will fund 100% at Uplands' costs. Uplands does pay its own way. Two separate engineering studies were conducted by the city's third-party engineering consultant, HDR, at the city engineering staff direction. The conclusions of those studies outline the required water and sewer improvements and show these upgrades will fully accommodate the Uplands development as well as upgrade existing deficiencies and some aging city infrastructure. The HDR studies are included in the staff report and backup information, and we're happy to discuss any further details on those reports during the Q and A portion. We also work closely with CDOT and Mile High Flood District in the contemplated road and storm drainage improvements, and they do work. Of note, Uplands will improve the existing flooding condition of Shaw Boulevard to the west of Parcel A. You'll probably hear a lot of concerns about that issue tonight. We have spent considerable efforts with city engineering staff, Mile High Flood District, making 100% sure that Uplands can help. Today, there is no pond or restriction, so when we get a significant event, it all goes down Shaw Boulevard. Additionally, over the course of the development, Uplands will pay over $70 million in municipal fees to the city of Westminster, which will make quite an impact. What's before you tonight are not construction documents that are for construction, nor do these approvals allow us to build anything. We'll be back with the site-specific development plans and full engineering documents according to the city's process for your consideration in the future. Next slide, please. Regarding the availability of water for this project, as was touched on a couple times, this was one of the very first boxes we checked when we started the process. This slide references several city documents, all of which are confirmed by the staff report, were discussed multiple times. We'll incorporate those in the record for reference tonight, but due to their size, this is a summary for tonight's purposes. The budgeting of water to this, for this project started in 2007, predating all of the recent water rate issues, which has no correlation to the water budget for this project. The water for Uplands was reaffirmed in the 2013 comp plan, and nearly every, every year since, it is intact today. We were given a budget of 778 acre feet, and we're going to come in well under that number. If there are any concerns about the process for the city's water budgeting for the project, we would welcome the opportunity to discuss that further. Next slide, please. The following eight slides, which I'm going to go through rather quickly in the interest of time, are comparisons of actual photos of some of the edges of Uplands. We think these pictures are worth 1,000 words. These improvements are significant improvements that Uplands will fund, and they specifically address bike and pedestrian travel, safety and mobility, increased traffic lanes and on-street parking, safer tree-lined sidewalks and landscape buffers. So this first slide is the existing condition of 84th Avenue, the south boundary, the red line up in the right corner, south boundary of Parcel A. Next slide, please. And this is the future condition. It adds parking lanes, bike lanes, tree-lined sidewalks, et cetera. Next slide. This is a picture of 88th Avenue today. Next slide, please. And this is the future condition. It adds safer bike lane, on-street parking, and safer sidewalks on the south side of the street. Next slide, please. This is, believe it or not, Federal Boulevard today. Next slide, please. This is the future condition. It adds another travel lane, a 12-foot planted tree lawn, as well as a 10-foot sidewalk on the west side of Federal. Today, that is a dirt path north and south of the bus stop at 86th. Next slide, please. This is Lowell Boulevard today. Next slide. And this is the future condition. It adds bike lanes to both sides, pedestrian walkways, and on-street parking to the east side. Next slide. Compliance. So regarding the PDP, we started with the adherence to the comp plan earlier tonight, and now as it relates to the PDP, and as further confirmed by staff's recommendation in the staff report, the plans submitted comply with and have no exceptions to the Westminster Municipal Code. These plans as submitted comply with and have no exceptions to the T-Mund Design Guidelines and Design Standards, and there are no exceptions requested within the preliminary development plan. Next slide, please. And one more. Regarding the 10 approval criteria per Westminster Municipal Code 11-5-14 for a PDP, I would refer you to the staff report on how each of these criteria are confirmed to be met and Mr. Caldwell's presentation tonight. We don't have time in tonight's presentation to go through all of these items, so we have handed out this reference document to each of you and entered into the record tonight. This document explains in great detail how each and every one of these criteria are met. If any Commissioners have any questions about how we may or may not meet the 10 approval criteria, we look forward to discussing those during the Q and A. Now I'm going to turn it back, back to Bonnie. Turn the next slide, please.
All right, we're almost done, guys. We walk to the annexations and rezonings, the PDP. Just want to talk through the master ODP. If you could go to the next slide. Over the last four and a half years, we've heard many requests for more detailed information on what Uplands will look like. The master ODP provides the next level of detail for the area of Uplands that falls within the T-Mund Land Use Designation, which is this Central A parcel shown here in orange. The master ODP establishes additional park locations. It sets up the overall street grid and provides guidance on what the mixed-use village center will look like. Next slide. First, the PDP, or sorry, the master ODP provides additional detail on parks. Here you see the 10 and 11-acre parks that were identified in the PDP with the addition of publicly accessible private parks shown here with a green asterisk. Next slide. A minimum of 4% of the land within Uplands will be publicly accessible private parks with a minimum of one per planning area. Here are examples of what those parks could look like, which will be designed and built with adjacent improvements. These will provide a variety of amenities within a short walking distance of existing and future residents. Next slide. The master ODP also provides additional details on the overall framework plan for Parcel A. Here you can see a more finely detailed street grid. Those are the navy lines, as well as trail and sidewalk connections shown here in the orange dashes. This vehicular, bike, and pedestrian network provides convenient access for existing and future residents to access the existing and proposed parks, the surrounding schools, and the existing and proposed commercial amenities. Next slide. The master ODP also divides the parcel into two sub-neigherhoods. The first is Village Residential, which is shown here in yellow. Village Residential Neighborhood is exactly how it sounds. It accommodates only residential uses and limits those uses to just single-family detached and single-family attached homes. Next slide. The Village Residential also includes a perimeter sensitivity zone, which is shown here in the purple diagonal lines on the east side of Boulevard, Lowell Boulevard. This zone creates a softer transition to the existing single-family homes to the west. Lowell is a narrower street that has driveway access to the homes fronting to the west. Following our conversations with our neighbors and city staff, we thought it was important to create a unique design solution for this area. Within this sensitivity zone, homes are limited to a maximum of two stories, and only single-family detached and duplex homes may be built. Next slide. While not specific to the sensitivity zone, here's a rendering of what a typical residential neighborhood will look like in Uplands. These details will be refined with the future site-specific ODPs for each neighborhood. But the master ODP sets the framework for a thoughtfully designed street that encourages bikes and pedestrians, low-water usage tree lawns and front yards, and alley-loaded homes that engage the street. Next slide. Next, we have the Village Center, which is shown here in orange. A key component of T-Mund is creating an activated Village Center that supports a variety of uses and activity. At Uplands, this is found at 86th and Federal. Where single-family homes, multifamily homes, and commercial uses are focused around the Central Park, creating a walkable and activated space for restaurants, shops, and community gathering. Connecting large public spaces with shops and restaurants and people has a proven track record of creating real community and special neighbors, neighborhoods, places for farmers, markets, movies on the lawns, and impromptu neighborhood gatherings. Next slide. The Village Center also includes unique design characteristics. Shown here in red on the north and south side of 86th Avenue, buildings will be required to engage with an activated streetscape through built-to-rerequirements, additional transparency requirements, and 30,000 square feet of future commercial land uses. Next slide. And here's what that Village Center will look like. This view is standing along Federal Boulevard, looking west along 86th, across the Central Park, and back to the mountain views to the west. 86th Avenue is a multimodal street that includes bikes and pedestrians with amenity areas on either side to encourage restaurant seating and overall community gathering. Next slide. And finally, just like the PDP, the master ODP complies with the comprehensive plan, Westminster Code, the PDP, and T-Mund Design Guidelines. No exceptions are requested with this plan either. And with that, Chad will walk us through our last approval criteria and complete our presentation.
Thank you, Bonnie. If I need a breather, we're almost done. Regarding the approval criteria for the 17 approval criteria for the Westminster Municipal Code 11-5-15 for an ODP official development plan, I would refer you to the staff report, Mr. Caldwell's presentation tonight, and again, this document. We don't have the time to go through all of those. We are happy to answer any questions that come up after that. Next slide, please. And one more. In closing, this slide shows and outlines Goal Four of the 2021, 2022 City's Strategic Plan. Uplands achieves these goals and so many more for the current and future residents of Westminster, as you've seen from the details of our presentation tonight. Next slide. I want to thank so many of the stakeholders in the community who have voiced support for the project, written letters, sent in voicemails of support, and some of those that will be here speaking tonight in support of Uplands. Among them are Westminster Public Schools, Groundpoint Academy, small business owners around the city, including Summit Square Shopping Center and their great tenants, Pasquale Carrio, owner of the Hill Store at 88th and Lowell, Westminster Chamber of Commerce, Susan Daggett with the Rocky Mountain Land Institute, Maker Housing Partners, and so many others that, again, you'll hear from tonight. On behalf of the applicant team, I want to thank the planning commission for hearing us out tonight. I want to thank the entire city staff for a very thorough review process and exhaustive technical reviews that we've been working, working through together for the past several years to assure this city that Uplands can and does meet all the requirements Westminster has for new and great neighborhoods. Look forward to answering all the questions you have later this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ken Patrick Caldwell, Senior Planner. And I just want to remind the Planning Commission of who's here for the city. Rita McConnell, Planning Manager. John McConnell, Principal Planner. Kristen Decker, Deputy City Attorney. Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner. Keith Klein, Transportation Engineer. Dave Downing, Community Development Director. Nicole Ankeny, Senior Landscape Architect. Julie Keeler, Utilities Engineering Manager. Sarah Borgers, Water Resources and Quality Manager. Alex Gann, Engineer. Heather Otterstetter, Stormwater Coordinator. Nathan Ink, Senior Engineer. Michael Wright, Principal Engineer. And virtually with us tonight are Dave Losman, City Engineer. Scott Wimmer, Fire Lieutenant. Melanie Walter, Senior Engineer. And Aaron Kirschner, Senior Engineer. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open it up for questions from the commissioners. And I have the very first question. John, can you explain what T-Mund is?
Yes. So T-Mund is an acronym for Traditional Mixed Use Neighborhood District. And it's a neighborhood district that allows a mixture of uses, everything from commercial and retail, office, and anything from multifamily to attached housing to single-family detached housing, the appropriate neighborhood scale and densities.
Great, thank you. I thought that might benefit a lot of us here. Okay, any questions from commissioners? Any comments? Commissioner McConnell.
Thank you, Chairman Bosch. So my first question has to do with public land dedication. And according to, typically, we would have 12 acres per 1,000 residents. Is that correct? I mean, that's not what we would have, but that's what's stated in the city code.
I'd like to direct that question at Nicole Ankeny with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries.
Good evening. Nicole Ankeny, Senior Landscape Architect with Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. Yes, that is correct. According to the Westminster Municipal Code, Section 11-6-8, we require 12 acres per 1,000 people.
And this development has, they're proposing what again?
So at this time, they are proposing a combination of physical land dedication and also of cash in lieu.
Okay. And the physical land dedication, I know, includes the two-view corridors as parcels B and D?
It does, correct. So currently, they're proposing approximately 40 acres of physical land dedication. Six of those are view corridor, and the other 34 are parks and open space. So that gives approximately a remainder of about 24 acres, which they would owe in cash in lieu.
And that 34 acres is primarily parcel A, as the biggest chunk of that, but then there's some left in each of the others?
There are, yes. Yeah, there's about a three-acre parcel in C. Let me make sure I get these parcels correctly. In A, there is two separate public land dedications, one with about 11 acres of park and another with 10 acres. In the portion B to the south, there are two different areas. And Ms. Nozolik may have the exact numbers on parcel B to make sure I get this correct. There is also some additional land as part of C that wraps into Cobblestone Park. And there are three additional acres surrounding in the multifamily along 88th Avenue. Thank you. Just for clarification, parcel A, there are two for a total of 21 acres. That's the 10 and the 11 acres combined. In parcel B, it's a little over six acres of the physical land dedication and an additional 3.28 in the view corridors. In parcel three, or parcel C, it is three acres. In parcel D, that's 4.24 acres with an additional 3.07 acres in view corridors.
Okay, and the cash in lieu of, where does that cash go?
That cash is collected at the time of final plat. So those land acres are dedicated at final plat. The cash in lieu, if any is owed, is also paid at that time. And how that is handled is the, it goes into a revenue account, and the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department, in coordination with the City Managers Office, the Budget and Policy Office allocates those funds to both acquisition and capital improvement funds. And all of that is handled through our budgeting process, which is approved by City Council.
Okay. And if I did my math right, and I may not have, then what ends up is public land dedication is about a third of what would be required by the 12 acres per 1,000 residents?
That's correct. And I did want to mention that the, we, staff put together a chart for tracking purposes to help, because it is, you know, a development that is supposed to develop over 15 to 20 years. We put together a chart for tracking purposes so that we can keep up with what is dedicated over time. The reason I want to mention that is because currently in the PDP, there is some flexibility in the unit type and the unit count that could occur in each of those parcels. So those numbers are currently an approximation. As they come in, if this project were to be approved, as they come in for the site-specific official development plans, then at that point in time, we would have more specific information on the unit count and on the unit type, because that is what drives our population. It's embedded in our city code. Single-family detached counts as three persons per unit. Single-family attached counts as 2.5 persons per unit. And multifamily is two persons. So at that, at this point in time, that chart is a projection based upon maximizing unit types. Essentially, what we did is staff took the unit type that would produce the most in population to show that calculation of what that dedication would look like. But at this point in time, it is, it's an approximation.
All right, thank you.
Right, if I clarify one statement that was made there, I think might have been a misstatement. Chad Ellington. I think, Commissioner McConnell, you asked if the physical land dedication was approximately one-third of the total requirement? And it's really two-thirds. So we're dedicating something like 40 acres, and there's something maximum density, something like 60 to 65 required. So our physical land dedication is more like two-thirds of the 12 per 1,000, and the rest would be in cash. Thank you, I wasn't sure if that was clear.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on the water, the 778 acre feet. Where did that start and who could kind of respond to that? Because my concern is every month I get something in the mail saying we don't have enough water.
We have Sarah Borgers from our Public Works and Utilities Department.
Yes, so Commissioner Mayo. So this development was included in the 2013 comprehensive plan and the associated water supply plan that was done in conjunction with that plan. So it was anticipated that the, that this parcel would be developed and that water supply was already planned for and is accounted for in the water supply plan. So there is sufficient water for this project already planned in existing water supply planning.
So where's the shortage at in the city? I mean, every month I get something trying to encourage me to take out my lawn, trying to encourage me not to water my lawn, trying to. So it appears that there's a shortage somewhere, or I wouldn't be getting this stuff in the mail every month.
So the conservation planning and the drought planning that you'll often hear about from Public Works and Utilities is really geared towards emergency planning. So being prepared for drought, being prepared for those climatic events that we don't have control over. Those climate events are much greater in impact to our water supply than these developments are. And so what you're seeing is largely gearing us towards being a resilient city for long-term climate events.
Okay. Have we acquired a significant amount of water since we last had a climate event? And we weren't allowed to water our lawns? And our lakes were down, and Stanley Lake was down, and we had water restrictions?
So the last watering restrictions that the city went through were in 2002. Those were the last mandatory restrictions. We did recently have some voluntary restrictions here just a year last year and in 2012. Since that time, there have been water shares that have been purchased. Those are currently going through a water court case right now to be used for municipal purposes. So yes, there have been, there has been water procured since that time.
Okay. And then my last question, I'll get off the subject, is we keep hearing a lot about, this is a farm, keep the farm. To run a farm, you have to have a lot of water. Where did that water go?
So the water that's used on that parcel now is owned by the current property owner, or leased by others. That is irrigation ditch water largely, I believe. Though I think they may have other supplies, I'm not aware of. So that water will be, the water that's owned by them will be owned by them. The city does not necessarily get that water.
Okay, so this project doesn't get any of that?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Tomacek.
So I do have some questions regarding the roads. The, there's a lot of description of the roadways in the packet that was sent, but appreciate that. There was at least one comment that I recall in the group asking whether or not any takings would be made to develop the roadways or would all that development come from parts of this parcel?
Like to let the applicant speak to this, and our engineering division can follow up if there are any additional questions.
Yeah, and engineering can back me up on this. If I misstate any of this, please cut me off. But all of the roads and the improvements to the roads, the widening of the roads, et cetera, that are planned in this PDP document before you tonight will happen on Uplands property. And so it's either existing right-of-way that exists today or a portion of the, of the Uplands property that will be utilized and given as right-of-way to the city to make those improvements. So nobody else's property gets taken. Nobody else's property is affected by the widening of the roads.
So before you sit down, sort of a following question to that. Obviously, what's in front of us is development that can happen on the Westminster side of the city line. What improvements, if any, are going to be made on the Adams County side?
There are some outfall and off-site improvements where the municipal utilities run through Adams County, I think. And so some of those improvements would go through the existing right-of-way, not through private property, it would go through the existing right-of-way. Any storm, off-site sewer that already exists today. Some, in some cases, we're upsizing those facilities or making various improvements to those. All of those are in the right-of-way today, not in private property.
But as far as like sidewalks, crosswalks, those kinds of things?
Right-of-way.
It's really Adams County issue, not what's in front of us.
That's correct, well, that's largely correct. I mean, there are some adjacent improvements that are in the right-of-way that are, that will be improving. But they're, again, not in, not on someone else's private property.
And then my last question maybe is geared more toward the city than anybody else. There were lots of issues raised about speed limits being not adhered to by drivers, reckless driving, bad road conditions in the area, so on and so forth. So my question to staff perhaps is, do we, as the city of Westminster, have the ability to correct any of that? And that goes both to roadway management, which is Heath's Baileywick, and to the police department, of course.
Yes, so thank you, Commissioner Tomacek, Keith Klein, City of Westminster Transportation Engineer. So I think you are, some of those comments are particularly towards 82nd Avenue, which is not part of the Uplands ODP in PDP or property. But there is a section from Irving to Lowell on 82nd that is Adams County to maintain. But we will continue to look at that and see if there's ways that between Irving and Federal Boulevard, we can help to control speeding. Some of that may be speed awareness signs, maybe raise pedestrian crossings and different things like that. But we will be paying attention to the way that traffic starts to roll out.
Okay. In your general experience widening, well, I'll say this, living at 104th and Federal, widening of roads and improving of roads tends to exacerbate the existing speeding problem. How do you see the proposals sort of fixing that issue on Lowell, 84th and 85th?
So by the addition of the bike lanes and by adding parking on 88th, 84th, and Lowell Boulevard, that tends to kind of increase the friction of driving. And so it's not just a wide-open widened roadway like what we will see on Federal Boulevard. And so that does tend to slow traffic down. And again, from that, we will continue to watch. There's other improvements that we have been discussing with the developer as called like neck downs. So at intersections where we expect pedestrians to be crossing, we will shorten that up so that you wouldn't have parking at the actual intersection. But we'll have the through lanes and then the bike lane. So we'll actually bring the pedestrians kind of closer into the streets so that you can see that. And again, it gives that appearance that the roadway is narrowing down and helps to slow traffic. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several questions, and I wish I had them a little more organized. But let's start the staff here. I'd like to go back to the water supply issue, the 778 acre feet. And, and this, and there'll probably be questions for you and for the applicant here, so. So number one, I get that we had this in the water supply in 2013. And we were told all the time that we have plenty of water. And then all of a sudden, we start, in 2016, we get a memo saying, well, this may affect our water supply. And then all of a sudden, we have had these. So my question for you is, in 2021 numbers, what is the current, the current water budget for the entire city as far as use versus the current water budget, the maximum water budget we can have? And what, what would adding 778 acre feet to what we're currently using do as far as the development in the rest of the city?
So there's a couple of ways to answer that question. Considering that we are still currently in the 2013 comp plan, probably the easiest way to talk about it is that in 2013, we did identify that there was a 2,000-acre foot gap between how much water we needed and how much water we thought that we would have. And that's all in build-out scenario, that's not today. Today, we've got water supply for what we need. And over the years since that time, there have been a number of comp plan amendments. Those amendments in aggregate have been negligible. And when I say negligible, they're of an amount that our water modeling does not see the change that those make. In the, in that time as well, we've seen substantial water supply decreases in how much water city customers are using. And so overall, our city is actually decreasing the amount of water that we use in any given year, even though we've seen an increase in population. So that is, that is where we're saying that now, at this point, we are assuming conservation trends continue, and we are investing in infrastructure that we do feel like we have sufficient water supply for the city as a whole.
So just to clarify that last point, you're saying... So just to clarify that last point, you're saying that if trends continue, we will have enough water supply. What happens if conservation ended today and it was flat from now, now, and then we add on what, we still have that 2,000 acre foot gap?
We do not. We would run into problems if conservation trends turned around. So if the indoor water conservation trends that we've been seeing for some reason start increasing again, that's unlikely, given that most of those savings are coming from federally mandated water efficient fixtures and those sorts of things. We're continuing to work on outdoor, we're all over the place in terms of what we see from year to year in terms, in terms of outdoor water conservation, but we're certainly working on that. But if we did see something massively turn around and conservation trends turn the wrong direction, then, then there would be discussion about what next steps needed to be.
All right. And then, let's see. Am I asking you or? Well, well, you're up there and, and this may be also for the applicant, so, so hop in if it's, if it's your bailiwick there, but uh, so, so in, so at, today in the nice presentation that the applicant provided, they said that there, they've reduced about 18% of that water budget. Then, then they, there is a diagram saying 32.6 million gallons of water savings, which is about 100 acre feet, if my back of the envelope calculations are correct. And then I have a, a letter from 2018 that the city wrote stating that there was not an, that there would not be enough water in that water budget or there's, let me find it. Staff has noted the design may leave very limited water available for outdoor irrigation for residential properties and communal park areas under that 778 acre feet budget. So I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling all these numbers, so can you provide some light on that, please?
Right, so I'm glad you brought that up. That was based on an older version of what had been submitted, that one comment from the city saying that there might not be sufficient water for outdoor irrigation. That was not the most recent submittal that they have given to us, where they currently sit now with what we have seen in a submittal, they do come in under the 778 by a pretty decent margin. When we run our calculations, we do not include those conservation measures that they have spoken about, that's kind of just gravy. We don't use those, we, we have to assume that they're going to use a standard amount of water to be conservative.
Okay, got it. So the, so that 32.6 million is not being accounted for in this?
Yes.
In, okay, perfect. That, that answers, that answers that set of questions. Okay, great. I think that's it for water. Now, uh, let's, I'd kind of like to move towards transportation, uh, roads here, so probably Mr. Klein to come up?
Yes, Mr. Klein's available from the city staff and I'm sure the applicant has some folks that can speak to this as well.
Great. Great. So there, so one of the comments that we see, received today was from John Carpenter's a previous, uh, previous employee of the city. One thing he brought up was the right of way on Federal Boulevard being, should be 165 feet wide for a six lane major CDOT arterial. And I noticed that we are narrowing the travel lanes down to 11 feet, I assume we're narrowing to 11 feet up through that area. It seems like we're going to be adding a lot of congestion, especially once we put that traffic light in at 86th Avenue there, and that's going to increase, you know, the ground level ozone and pollution in that regard. So I'm just, I'm just curious, what's your, why we're not dedicating that or if this letter is an error? Or, or say, answer how you'd like.
Okay, we are obtaining the, so we are working with CDOT as well. So Federal Boulevard is a state highway and the right of way will belong to CDOT. So we are working with CDOT to obtain the right amount of right of way to successfully pass the vehicles and to have the bicycle and pedestrians in the, in that right of way as well. And so yes, typically, CDOT likes to see 12-foot travel lanes. We are at, we have requested that we see 11-foot travel lanes. And that is not just to skinny it up for congestion, but it's actually to think about when pedestrians or bicyclists need to cross Federal. So every foot does count. So you think about the, the delay in the traffic signal, we have to account for the time for pedestrians to cross and give them the proper walk time. So by actually shortening the width of the pavement that a pedestrian would have to walk across, we actually can increase the green time on Federal and shorten the green time for 86th Avenue or 84th Avenue. So it, it's all kind of, it works in concert with that. Yes, this project will add traffic. It will add to the congestion that we currently see, but all of the planning efforts that the city has done and Dr. Cog regionally has accounted for this property to be developed. And it is anticipated and we continually to look at ways to improve the signal timing as congestion kind of arises. And our goal is always to try to reduce the wait time at traffic.
Perfect, that, thank you for that. That's, that's very helpful on that.
Yes, and I believe on some of our extra right of way that we used to do, we had larger tree lawns and even that is now we're starting to be more cognizant of water and other things that are there. So that too came into play where we didn't have such a large tree lawn between the sidewalk and the back of the road.
Okay. And, and as far as the narrower travel lanes, because we are really skinnying up Lowell and 84th based on those pictures, it looks like, and 88th even it looked like, but 80, Lowell and 84th were 10 and a half foot lane, travel lanes.
Yeah, so that is actually an effort that the city has been doing throughout, a lot of our restriping efforts are 10 and a half foot travel lanes on our major arterials. And we have not seen a negative impact, not, we don't see any additional delays, so it has actually been positive. And that is the reason why we supported this again, to shorten that, the, the width of the asphalt and to provide more space. So on like Lowell, 88th and 84th, we go down to the 10 and a half foot lanes to try to give more space to the bicycle lane as well. So rather than the minimum four foot wide bike lane, it may actually be a five foot bike lane.
Okay. Got it, all right, perfect. I think that answers my transportation question some of them, thank you. All right. So Mr. McConnell, I think the next I'm going to ask about is drainage, please?
So. I'd like to encourage the applicant to come up as well as Mr. Nathan Aung, our engineering division.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Aung, Senior Engineer for Community Development.
Pleasure to meet you. Don't think I've seen you at one of these before, so it's great to see you.
This will be my first one.
Awesome, welcome. So there were a lot of comments about the drainage and in fact, there is even a secondary drainage report provided in one of the, uh, one of the, what do you call it, public comments? And I'm, and so I'm most curious about, uh, on the drainage on Lowell where we are going to be, it's, looks like we're going to be above the, or was it Shaw Boulevard, we're going to be two inches above the crown of the, of the street as we're in a major storm? Is that the case? Is that, can you ta, talk to me a little bit about that? Is that going to be an improvement to what we have currently? Is that going to be a detriment to what we have currently? Because, you know, in my day job, I'm a civil engineer and usually we don't like to have the crown of the road under, underwater. So anytime I see that, that gives me a red flag. So could you give me the city's position on that, please?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So we've done a number of drainage reviews with the applicant on this process to try to narrow down the major problems that, that we've seen facing this area. Historically, Shaw Boulevard has been rather inundated during major events. What we're doing is we're looking at all of the options to improve that situation. In no way is it the city's anticipation that the development of this property at any time will negatively impact those downstream residents on Shaw. I think that, you know, with the scale of this detention facility on parcel A, being regional, being over 130 acres, you know, we're having Mile High take a look at this and review this with us, as well as Mueller Engineering, who Mile High has brought on to aid them in their review. So we're still kind of working out some of those downstream issues that currently exist. And we're going to make them do detailed hydraulic analysis as well as a letter of map revision that will be reviewed by FEMA. So all of that will be going into a level, or a phase three drainage report that will be reviewed and approved prior to any plaque being approved for this development. Due to the scale of the regional facility, we felt this was the best way to kind of incrementally handle some of these improvements and challenges with this site.
Okay, no, thank you, that, that really clarifies that. So this may be premature, but there was an accusation and I saw it in some of the calculations about, oh, where was it at? Something like it's above 87 CFS in a specific location, it's going to bubble through the curve because it's, the sewer is surcharged? Is that, is that an ac, is whoever wrote that, was that an accurate statement?
What we're looking at is it's definitely downstream there at Circle and Shaw. There's an existing inlet that's rather large and there's a storm sewer network that is over capacity at this time. It looks like it will be bubbling up at some point or another, depending on how large that pipe within Shaw is needing to be. But what we're doing is we're making sure that we review any sort of surcharging and ensure that there is an overflow path for that to get down to the major drainage way and not impact the existing flood plain that is along Shaw Boulevard today.
Okay, perfect. And that will all be done during, in subsequent submittals, uh, as we go through the different ODP processes?
All of that will be reviewed by myself as long, as well as the staff here and Mile High and their consultant.
All right. Great, that answers that, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And, uh, just, I think just one other question for now, and I apologize for jumping around here, but just to clarify, on the, on the public land dedication, the public or the private parks that the applicant is proposing, are, are those private parks with public access or those private parks only for the residents of the uplands?
Thanks for the question, Chad Ellington. There will be no parks that are exclusive only to uplands residents. In other words, every park that we build, that the city builds on PLD land or that are view corridors that are kept as they are today or somehow improved, all of those parks will be open to the public, anyone in the public, not, not just Westminster city residents. So there are no fences, there are no HOAs restricting access, there are no exclusive parks that we will build, they will be open to the public.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I yield.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call.
Excuse me, Chair Bossard, did I ask one more question?
No, we're going to take a break.
All right.
Sorry, I, I was going to take a break at 8:30, so we'll get your question as soon as we're back. I'd like to call a short recess so everyone can use the restrooms and we will reconvene at 8:49, so you've got 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Hello, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the meeting at this time. Commissioner Tomacek, I believe you had some questions?
I just had one more, and it's sort of a follow-on to what was being asked before. It has to do with private versus public parks. It's indicated that the private parks would be made public in effect. What would keep the HOA from making them private in the future?
I don't know of any parks that are fenced off or private anywhere nearby. And so I think our intent is that these parks will be developed with the adjacent communities. They are a requirement of the PDP, and those parks are left open to the public. So there, there is no, there are no, there's no way to secure them. They're not gated or anything like that that would have access cards. So by definition, a park that is available to the public should, should be uncontrollable. So what would stop an HOA from restricting access? I guess just the mere design of the parks. They are open to the right-of-way, they are adjacent to, to neighborhoods, just like any other park in the rest of the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo.
Yeah, thank you. Um-
Wait, Patrick, did you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to follow up on that. We do have a few examples in the city of private parks that are open to the public, and the way they are kept access to the public is there is an easement, a public access easement that overlays that little piece of ground that is reviewed and approved during the official development plan review process. So it's generally few examples in the city where that occurs.
No offense, but that answer makes me feel better.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayo.
Yeah, I had a question on the, the calculations on the number of people per unit. And who's the best person to-
Mr. Mayor, you're, you're referring to the public land dedication calculation?
No, not the public land dedication, the how many people in a single-family home, how many people in a condo, how many people in a duplex?
I'll refer that to the applicant first, and then the staff as a-
My name is Jellican Norris Design. I believe you're asking specifically about how the number of people per home is calculated.
Yeah, correct.
So the numbers that we're showing in both the PDP and the master ODP, which is three per single-family detached, 2.5 per single-family attached, and two per multifamily, is pulled directly from Westminster Municipal Code. It's the standard number that's been used. I couldn't tell you how long, someone from staff could answer that, but it's the standard number in code.
Okay. Because that's kind of what I was thinking. It's a standard number that's been used forever, but I'm not sure it reflects today's demographics. You drive down our street, multifamily home means multifamilies in a home.
And, and so just for clarification, I think, are you referring to the PLD calculations? The chapter for PL, okay. And Nicole, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes. Ms. Jellican is correct. It's in our Westminster Municipal Code. That code section is 11-6-8. You're correct. Commissioner Mayor, that was approved many years ago. I don't have an exact date, but I do believe that was approximately 2002, when those were put into place.
So 20 years ago, which doesn't match the demographics today. Okay.
Andrew Spurgeon, Long Range Planner. If I may, the 2010 census in Westminster, which is even newer than that code requirement, there were 2.58 persons per household in Westminster. With our 2020 census, 2.49 persons per household. So household sizes, according to the census, have shrunk over the last two years.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Carpenter.
Sorry about that. Just one more question. And this is, we are, this is from the comment that we're not dedicating the irrigation water that's, that's currently on the site. In my experience, and I don't know what Westminster's requirement is, but other municipalities require you to dedicate water rights that come with the land, at least at the time of platting. So why is, does Westminster not have that requirement? Why, why is this not being pursued as another way to get water?
Right. Yeah, the applicant can give this one a shot, but I think also Ms. Boarders can address this as well.
Two, two answers to that question. The first is that the farm is dry land irrigated, meaning it is not irrigated. There is no ditch water, there is no surface irrigation, there is no typical cornfield-type irrigation for this. The farm that's been farmed has been dry land farming. So there is no, like, extreme amount of irrigation water that's coming with the property. Any subsurface water that is owned by the current property owner of the church will be retained by them. I think it's relatively negligible, it's not like it has a bunch of farming water, like you were suggesting earlier. So they are retaining that. The current all-studist here, and will speak later, and can maybe address some of those things in the public comment. But that is probably the best answer for now.
Okay. It's, it's not ditch irrigated, and there's not an allocation for it.
Correct.
Clear. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question for the applicant. In our motions that we have presented to us, there are conditions put in place by staff and the city. Is the applicant aware of these conditions, and do they accept them?
Thank you for the question, Chad Ellington. Again, we are aware of the conditions and additional conditions, and we do accept those tonight.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I will open the public hearing. We're going to do the in-person hearing first and have the voicemails afterwards. And I would like to remind people that you will be called in the order in which you signed up, and that we are enforcing a five-minute rule for all comments. I'd like to have people who wish to speak, come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and state whether you agree or disagree with the previous speaker. If you agree, say so. If you disagree, say so. And then add only comments that give new information to the testimony. Please do not repeat testimony that has already been given. With that, I will open up the floor to the first speaker.
Thank you, Chair Bosscher. The first speaker this evening is Eric Kornacki, and I apologize in advance if names are mispronounced. Thank you.
Well, as I'm the first speaker, nobody to agree with. But hello, my name is Eric Kornacki. I live in Denver, but I work in Westminster as the Director of the Uplands Community Collective. I'm not a real estate developer. I am a community developer. And I have spent nearly two decades working in some of Denver's most marginalized and under-invested communities to fight with and on behalf of residents, creating community-led solutions to achieve health equity and environmental justice. When I was approached by the Uplands team about working in Westminster, I was skeptical for a number of reasons. Namely, I have never seen housing developers who really care all that much about the community. But it didn't take me very long to realize that this team does care about addressing issues traditionally outside of housing development. Issues such as access to healthy and affordable food, thriving schools, pathways for jobs and economic opportunity, supporting small businesses, and fixing deficiencies in our public infrastructure, such as sidewalks, intersections, parks, water, and more. The Uplands team is committed to making the entire community more sustainable and equitable, not just within the Uplands boundaries. So our nonprofit, the Uplands Community Collective, is focused on helping them in four major areas. First is workforce development. Uplands is projected to generate nearly $1.8 billion in construction over the next two decades. This will create over 650 annual construction jobs. My vision is that all or most of those come from the surrounding community, as many as we can possibly pull from our existing neighborhoods, including Shaw Heights and Federal Heights. We recently held a construction skills boot camp with the Colorado Home Building Academy, and we will be continuing this relationship for years to come, so that we can ensure that construction workers needed for this project come from the surrounding community. Secondly, community serving real estate. We are working with partners such as Habitat for Humanity and Elevation's Community Land Trust to ensure that single-family units in their existing surrounding neighborhoods remain affordable. The Collective has also acquired an old liquor store and bar. Some of you may have been there, but you don't have to admit to it, Davy's Locker, Eddie Ethan Lowell. And we are going to be building a new hub for community health and economic development. Third, entrepreneur and small business support. We will be launching a food entrepreneur training program to support those who make food out of their homes, such as tamales, salsas, you name it, or have an interest in supporting or starting a restaurant or food-based business. We will be creating an incubator kitchen and pop-up market where they can gain experience and test their business model, again, creating economic opportunity right here in our community for small businesses and aspiring entrepreneurs. And fourth, community food systems. We are launching hundreds of backyard gardens in the coming years by hiring and training community health promotoras. These gardens will increase access to healthy food and teach healthy eating and sustainability to our communities most vulnerable, especially youth and those in disenfranchised communities of color. This is a model I pioneered in southwest Denver, where we started over 2,000 gardens, leading to increased access to healthy food, as well as numerous jobs. And the Collective wants to save the farm. Our vision is to preserve a five-acre community farm within the PLD of Uplands and allow this land to provide food for the community for the first time in over a century. I know from firsthand experience that investment is the only way to address inequity in our built environment, our economy, and our public health. our economy, and our public health. There are many people here tonight that don't want the community to change. But there are thousands more in urgent need of housing and jobs and parks. And they might not be able to be here tonight because they're working or raising families or simply tired from trying to make ends meet. They want investment in better schools, safer streets and sidewalks, access to healthy food, and better jobs. I believe Uplands is that catalyst. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Charlie Woolley, and followed by Elaine Adair.
Hello, I'm Charlie Woolley. I live at 1865 East Cedar Avenue in Denver, and I'm a property owner here in Westminster at 3101 West 97th Avenue. There are many reasons to support the Uplands project. I'm going to talk about just two. The first has been mentioned previously, this acute shortage of housing in our metro area and its housing of all types. Our population growth has outpaced the new supply of housing throughout the front range. The short supply has made it impossible for many families, both renters and buyers, to find choices in housing. The Uplands can make a serious impact on the housing supply, even though it's only programmed at 10 units to the acre. It will provide a large diversity of housing for diverse income levels. I'm the founder of St. Charles Town Company, a real estate company that redevelops historic buildings, neighborhood infill, and workforce housing. We have an agreement to move forward with the Uplands group to build workforce housing on the site if this project gets approved and moves forward. It will be very similar to our St. Mark Village project at 97th and Federal, but instead of 36 dwelling units to the acre, it will be at 18 dwelling units to the acre. This is an example, I think, of true diversity in housing types. My second reason for pointing out one of the many reasons to support Uplands is their commitment to sustainability, particularly water conservation, which will, in the future, become much more critical than even energy consumption to us in metro Denver and around the country. Our projects are all built to green building standards, and it would be great to join a community of true sustainable homes and buildings in Uplands.
Thank you.
Elaine Adair is next, followed by Linda Graybill.
I'm Elaine Adair. I'm a homeowner at 8921 Hastings Way in Westminster, and I disagree with the previous speaker as I am extremely opposed to the proposed Uplands development. The proposal does not meet Policy 1168, which requires public land dedication, or PLD, in the amount of 12 acres per 1,000 persons. Based on the maximum population, the proposal would require 65.05 acres of PLD. However, the application only dedicates 40.65 acres in physical land, meaning that 24.4 acres of the required PLD are missing. The policy states that the only exceptions that can be made to this requirement for cash-in-lieu is if it would not serve the public interest. This is clearly not the case when the overall proposal would result in the loss of over 193 acres of undeveloped land, and most of Westminster's preserved land is north of 92nd Avenue, while less than 2% is found in Shaw Heights, an adjacent neighborhood to Parcel A. According to a New York Times article, "In most American cities, white residents live near parks, trees, and baseball fields, while communities of color are left with concrete and the heat that comes with it." This is true in Westminster as the southern portion of the city is the most racially diverse and contains the most middle and working-class residents. While the proposal would provide some parks, it is crucial to remember that the net loss would be over 193 acres. The article also states that many residents of historically disadvantaged areas worry that better parks and more trees will lead to green gentrification, attracting wealthier families and pricing current residents out of their homes. On that topic, there is no mention of affordable housing within the packet itself, only references to middle-income for-sale homes. Uplands Economic Impact Report assumes that within their development, the average for-sale housing value would be $550,000, and the average household income will be $102,000. In contrast, according to the US Census, the median value of owner-occupied housing in Shaw Heights between 2015 and 2019 was just under $291,000, and the median household income was just over $68,000. The assumptions made in the proposal do not come close to the reality of nearby neighborhood demographics. I am also opposed due to the city's water crisis. According to Westminster's Water Supply Plan, drought is the greatest threat to city's water supply. States at Risk predicts that by 2050, summer drought severity in Colorado is projected to be among the worst in the country. If Westminster is already experiencing issues resulting in increased water prices, perhaps city projections for the future should be questioned. Statistics surrounding the COVID-19 pandemic are the next reason I oppose the PDP. On average, the proposal would add an additional 23 people per acre to currently undeveloped land. The CDC's website states that communal spaces in close living quarters and multifamily housing increase the risk of getting and spreading COVID. And a report by Statistics Canada found that people living in apartments were at higher risk of dying from COVID during the first wave of the pandemic. Numerous studies found that the probability of novel disease outbreaks will likely grow threefold in the next few decades, and Uplands would only add to the risk of greater disease spread. I am also opposed to the extreme growth Westminster has already experienced. The city ranked number 20 in the entire country for new suburban apartment units from 2015 to 2020, and the addition of Uplands' almost 1,250 multifamily units would bring that number to at least 3,381. According to the US Census, in 2000, Shaw Heights had a population of 5,185. Uplands' maximum population of 5,421 would more than double that region's overall population. It is also important to note that the Westminster Forward Comp Plan, which classified the land found within this proposal as a transition area, failed to be approved by City Council with a 3-3 vote in October, making its contents now moot. I am also concerned about the possibility of Uplands attempting to institute Metropolitan Special Districts, or MSDs. The proposal notes that in 2018, Uplands requested the formation of nine MSDs, as well as a complete or substantial exemption of the 2004 policy for MSD formation. In 2004, the city listed five issues of concern it had previously experienced with MSDs, and I hope that that exception is not made in this case in the future. To close, community members do not support this proposal. Uplands developers often speak about creating a community, but you cannot create a community by first destroying one.
Thank you.
Just a quick housekeeping reminder. When you are speaking at the podium, if you could please lean into the microphone, especially for the benefit of those at home listening, it can be very difficult to hear. There are several microphones in this council chamber. So Linda Graybill, you're up, and followed by Keith O. I'm not even going to pronounce that last name. Keith O., you're on deck.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairperson. I have had my research condensed down. It was a 15-minute speech. I got it down to six minutes and 14 seconds. That's still too long. So I give you that. And what is in the packet for those that are not aware is a brief timeline. I'll go over some of it. More intense timeline, and a lot of early maps. I guess I'm supposed to say if I agree or disagree with the previous person, but I'm kind of in a category by myself. I'm talking about dead people. I am a historian.
Can I ask you to pause just a second? Can you start her timer, please?
Oh, yeah. I'll try not to go over. Okay, so I am an educator, have been for 44 years. I'm a historical researcher and an avid gardener. So I guess in that sense, everything that is being said tonight has to do with history. I agree with history. History happens, okay? But in that, why should we discuss the history of the land? I mean, that was then, this is now. What does it matter? Well, it matters. It's a fascinating study, first of all, and I hope that you do read some of the anecdotes in there. And this area is representative of Westminster, both back then, starting in the 1800s to now. Okay, and we form that foundation of our history even as we plan for it, plan for the future of the land. I have a document that I wrote years ago. If the land could talk, what would the land want? It wants to be used. Anything that's not used just atrophies. It can't take care of itself. Studying the history shows, if you look at these maps and the timeline, most of this area has always, especially Parcel A, has always been designated for development since 1880. That's a long time ago. And a much denser housing, too, by the way. Moving forward possibly brings community involvement and usage of the land. Right now, it's private land. You can look at it, but you can't go on it and frolic and do the things that you might want to do. You can't even fly a kite, okay? So, and in consideration for the special opportunities this site can provide. I'm always excited when we provide more opportunities for our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Keith O., you are up, followed by Lance Nadling.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Keith Awoneal. For the last 10 years, I've been the Director of Crown Point Academy of Westminster. Crown Point Academy is the charter school located at 2900 West, I'm getting shorter, West 86th Avenue, directly across the street from this proposed development. On behalf of our 500 students, teachers, and staff at Crown Point, I'm expressing my strong support for the significant community benefits that would be realized through the proposed Uplands Community Project. I urge your approval on the proposed PDP and MODP required to bring this much-needed and long-overdue project to Westminster. As a public charter school, some of our biggest priorities are student safety, stable enrollment, and housing for our staff. For many years, we have worked closely with the Uplands team on a range of concerns that matter to Crown Point Academy. Most significantly, this includes improving safety in the area via upgrades to Federal Boulevard between 84th and 88th Avenue, a high-traffic corridor where there is currently no designated sidewalks for our students or to the bus stops that are there. I'm just going to say, as an aside from my notes, it terrifies me seeing some students go to that bus stop to the point where I've called and offered transportation personally to their parents. I don't want their kids crossing Federal or sitting at those bus stops with no access. The Uplands team has been responsive and proactive in working with us, collaboratively identifying new, safer options that will protect all pedestrians and especially our students. As the geographic school district faces declining enrollment, overall enrollment has dropped nearly 1,800 students since 2015 alone, an annual loss to the community of over $17 million in student funding. Crown Point's dedicated teachers and support staff are likewise pushed further and further away from the school. Students and families are moving out of the district, and due to lack of affordable housing, fewer and fewer new families are moving into our area. By creating more housing options at a price range that can accommodate teachers and parents, you can help ensure the continued success of our school and our students. You can help us attract and retain families and teachers, and you can generate much-needed tax revenue for the community's benefit. I thank you very much for your consideration and time.
Thank you.
Lance is up next, followed by Karen Ray. And since you are all being so expedient, I'll call out the next name after Karen will be Joshua Katz. Is Lance? I don't see anyone getting up. Lance? Okay, we'll move on to Karen Ray. Okay, Joshua, are you ready? Oh, I think I see him out in the lobby. I see someone waving. Are you Joshua? Perfect. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joshua Katz. 843 Federal Boulevard, and I agree with the previous speaker. I'm here as one of the owners of Summit Square Shopping Center, located right at 84th and Federal. We're one of the largest adjacent landowners to this project. I'm here to speak in support of the project. This development will help spur other development in the area. For example, we have been approached by a number of grocery, of potential grocery store tenants for our vacant big box spaces. None of the deals have worked out yet, but one of the most important things that grocery stores look at when they're deciding whether to open a new store and whether it will work out for them is the number of rooftops in the market area. The new rooftops created by Uplands should help in negotiating a deal with a future grocery store tenant and other tenants that will benefit the community and the city of Westminster. And in conclusion, we at Summit Square support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, are you back in the building? Okay, after Karen will be Kevin Matthews, followed by Brian Head.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Karen Ray. I live at 4060 Shaw Boulevard in Westminster. I am an opponent of the, I oppose this development. With only 1,100 acres of land left about in the city, which have not been built out, the Uplands proposal is missing the opportunity to serve the community and, in fact, in my opinion, will do harm to the city as a whole. It misses an opportunity to provide equal access to open space and parks to understaffed communities in Westminster. It undermines the purpose of the City Code 11.6.8 by not mandating the requirement of minimum public land dedication on the new development be enforced. The minimum is not a maximum. It's not the top. It's the low bar, and this development is not meeting that. This proposal incentivizes the developer by allowing a cash-in-lieu of the public land dedication and allows them increased density while denying the public greater access to park and open spaces. It reinforces what has been de facto environmental redlining throughout this city, underserving the most vulnerable populations, denying equal access to healthy, open space. This plan continues on a course of adding more urban heat islands in an era where climate change is affecting the quality of life, that what we do today impacts future generations. The proposal assumes sufficient water supply, yet is void of specifics about commercial usage. For example, and I spoke with Sarah Borcher some months ago, a very enjoyable discussion, but she gave the example, a brewery will use significantly more water than an insurance office, for example. None of those specifics are in this plan. So when we look at water, how are we really going to make that budget without having that defined? Water supply remains a continuing issue in this city. The city report on water supply Westminster Existing Conditions Version 5, 2019, I think it's in your packet. The report states originating from the South Platte River Basin makes up approximately 90% of the city's water. Water in this basin has been over-appropriated, meaning there's not sufficient water available in the basin to fill the needs of water rights holders, which Westminster is one. The water supply and climate change must be a factor in the city planning. How is it possible that Westminster is an exception to the climate change that we are facing today as a world? Study after study proves the less affluent the population, the more impacted by climate change. It is considered a public health crisis. The south part of Westminster is where there is the highest number of people of color, the area of the city with the lowest median income, and where the highest percentage of the senior population lives. Yet this area has the lowest percentage of parks. As was sampled earlier, the city boundaries in Shaw Heights, where only 27% of children are within a 10-minute walk of a park. This PDP and MODP is ignoring the pleas from surrounding community on what should be done with the land to serve the community, to mandate maximum preservation, not maximum building heights and maximum density. Here, there is an opportunity to preserve for community and for future generations, public open space. Over this past year, the city has been recognized as having the third-largest numbers of apartments built outside of Denver, and this is really not the vision that the city wants, is it? This proposal adds over 1,100 new apartments, including five-story buildings lining- This proposal adds over 1,100 new apartments, including five-story buildings lining Federal Boulevard on both the east and west side. It adds 88,000 square feet of commercial and retail spaces that are really not needed if you look around the city today, in the struggling strip malls that exist throughout this city. The water supply budget should be vetted. The public land dedication is not compliant with City Code 11.6.8 by not requiring the minimum, which are reasons why I believe the Uplands proposal fails the test of, the test that this city's vision statement has.
Wrap it up quickly, please.
That we are a thriving community of safe neighborhoods and beautiful open space that is sustainable and inclusive.
Thank you.
Kevin Matthews is up, followed by Brian Head and Dimitri Z.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Matthews. I'm a member of a group called the MB Denver. We're a housing advocacy organization. I'm also a member of 350 Colorado, and I'm currently a student in the Master's Program at the University of Denver in Environmental Policy and Management, concentrating in energy and sustainability. I don't think I've ever testified at a council meeting outside my home city, but after seeing this project, I knew I needed to be here tonight. A little over a month ago, I was testifying in another venue at Colorado's Air Quality Control Commission about Colorado's proposed greenhouse gas rule. And just to give you a brief sum up, this is about basically reducing the amount of driving to reduce greenhouse gases. The proposed rule was designed to mitigate the environmental impacts of new highways. The fact is that even if we're switching to electric cars in the next 10 years, it's still not enough to meet our climate goals. We also need to reduce the amount that people need to drive to get to work or run errands. Walkable multimodal developments near transit are going to be key to allowing people to drive less. This project runs adjacent to the 31 bus line on Federal Boulevard with connections to the G Line that brings residents to downtown Denver Union Station in about 40 minutes, giving new residents an option to be car-free in the Denver metro area. This will benefit current residents of the area as well, as experience tells us that with increased density to an area and more ridership, transit lines will see greater use and thus greater frequency. We can't allow ourselves to sprawl anymore. This project is a great example of gentle density, which has additional benefits as well. Climate change from municipalities like Westminster, it basically just means you're going to pay a lot of money for infrastructure. Water pipes that used to last 50 years aren't going to last 50 years anymore. Transmission lines that last a long time aren't going to, you're going to be constantly repairing those transmission lines and other infrastructure. Roads won't last as long with the effects of climate change and extreme weather. So you're going to have to figure out how to be financially resilient to pay for those things. In Denver, our group has done a lot of our own analysis of Denver's neighborhoods, and what we've generally found is denser neighborhoods with a variety of building types will provide residential taxes that are enough to cover their current infrastructure costs, while neighborhoods that are less dense suck up tax dollars and that the city does not have to pay. So denser neighborhoods are basically subsidizing more sprawl neighborhoods. $70 million in taxes and fees, as well as the $39 million in tap fees that will, that this project will generate, is going to be revenue that the city needs. Finally, I'll just mention that my wife and I have friends who live in Westminster today, about 10 minutes just north of the site. I tried to convince them to come testify, but they just had their second kid, so they weren't really into it. But they just had, anyway, they have told me that before that they would rather live in Denver. And it's not real, and when I've asked them to specify, it's not Denver that they're looking for. They're looking for a neighborhood, a mixed-use neighborhood where they can walk, the restaurants, where they have access to transportation. That's the things that they are looking to look for, and that's the neighborhood that they want to live in, and this is that neighborhood that is going to be built. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Brian, followed by Dimitri Z, and then Steven Benchek.
Save you the trouble. Brian Head, I live in the Highland Village neighborhood. I was one of the co-founders of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, past Chairman of the Jefferson County Business Lobby. I, I agree with the previous speaker. Seems like the environmental aspect is kind of the theme in the last couple of speakers. I had the opportunity to serve, to help craft the city's sustainability plan as being part of the Partners in Energy Panel. I've also participated in multimodal transportation panels with the city. Having reviewed this plan, I'm encouraged by the way that, that these guys are going about their business from an environmental and sustainability perspective. Additionally, I mentioned my roles with the Chamber and the Business Lobby. I've had the opportunity to speak with hundreds of business owners over the years, and one of the things that is most difficult is workforce housing, finding housing that's affordable for workers in that missing middle category. A lot of these people are currently in apartments. They're underhoused, they're commuting long distances in their cars, driving alone on the, on the highways, contributing to congestion on the roadways, as well as the environmental impact of their, their cars being on the road. Finally, I serve as President of a public charter school in Jefferson County, and I have talked to countless parents who are currently underhoused. They're, they're living in small apartments with children. They don't have real easy access to parks. They've had to move outside of the city and away from the school to get to affordable housing. Them being in apartment complexes drives up the rent that the apartment complexes can charge, that takes its toll on the lower, lower-income folks in our community that need those housing spaces. This development provides kind of that missing middle that I mentioned, that, that is designed for these types of families, that'll keep them here in our community. And I understand, I'm a, I'm a single father of three. I, I pay the water bills. I certainly understand the concern. I, I fight traffic on my way to work, just like, just like all of you, but I can tell you that I've, I've poured my heart and soul into this community. I was named the Citizen of the Year two years ago, and I, I look at this development and think, what does the opportunity cost for our community if we pass on this opportunity? Right now, we can choose the development that we, the developer that we get to work with. We're not in a position where we have to settle for the one that we have to work with. So I would encourage you to, to pass this, this plan. Thank you.
Okay, Dimitri is up, followed by Steven, and then Kurt Alstott.
Hi, Council. My name is Dimitri Zavarotti, and I'm here on behalf of MB Denver as a housing advocate. So over the last few years, I've been to a bunch of meetings that look just like this. It's, it's the same people showing up, and the, the thing I always hear from the opposition is, no, not here. And if everyone's saying no, then where? And it's usually the most affluent people, the people that have the time, and the people like me that are crazy enough about this, to show up. And, and we just cannot continue to do this. It's not sustainable. The crisis of our day is housing. We were in a housing crisis before the pandemic. The pandemic has simply escalated it and, and made it that much more worse. It's not a Westminster issue, it's not a Denver issue, it's a national issue. I have friends that, a couple of years ago, they were getting ready to buy a house, and they have better-paying jobs, they're doing much better, and they are farther behind. There are people that want to have kids and they can't afford it. It's, it's ridiculous. It has gotten so expensive across the entire metro. And the simplest piece of this equation is the supply. We are not building up housing. We haven't been building up housing since 2008, since the Great Recession put a giant halt to it. And, and what are we going to do? Do we want to build housing out, you know, out in the prairie? No, I think we need to build inside city limits. I think this is a great project. It's denser. Where I live, I walk everywhere. I, you know, I grew up in this area, I lived in Westminster, Boomfield, Lafayette, and I spent my time, you know, driving to the Westy Mall back in the 90s. And, you know, when I became an adult, I realized I don't want to drive anywhere. I don't want to have to drive anywhere. So when you live in a community where you can walk anywhere within 15 minutes, you realize how much more freedom you have. It's, it's amazing. It's, it's so freeing, and I love it. And, and this is the type of community we should be building. We should be building 10 of these, we should be building 50 of these. And every major metropolitan area has the same problem, and we cannot continue to keep saying no. We have to say yes, and we, we have to do it right, and we have to do it here and not on the prairie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steven is up, followed by Kurt and Jessica True.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Steven Benchek, and I would like to speak in support of this proposed Uplands project. There are many positive aspects of it, however, I'll focus on how well it integrates with the city's comprehensive plan. Page 1-26 establishes the city's goal, and I quote, "to foster a range of high-quality living options within the city, with emphasis on providing an appropriate mix of land uses that support the city's active lifestyle," end quote. And that, quote, "ensuring that a wide range of incomes, age groups, and lifestyle choices are accommodated will reinforce the city's identity as a diverse, attractive place in which to live and work," end quote. The proposed Uplands project excels in all of these. It will provide a walkable, mixed-use, and residential community that will ensure a high quality of life for those who live there. It will provide over 300 units of affordable and senior housing, ensuring that everyone has a place to live. It will provide the kind of housing that is so desperately needed in this region: duplexes, triplexes, and townhouses that will promote attainable homeownership. Westminster has grown by 10% in the last decade, and people are moving here. People need a place to live. With that, the city has two options. They can choose sprawl that cuts into open space, strains the water infrastructure, and worsens traffic, or they can choose sustainable infill development like Uplands that uses 30% less water than an average home, pays its own way in water and sewage fees, preserves 47 acres of open space, and promotes walking and biking. I don't know about you, but for me, choice is clear. Uplands is everything envisioned in the comprehensive plan and more. That is why I support it, and that is why I believe you should too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kurt is up next, followed by Jessica, and I'm going to circle back to Lance. Did you rejoin us by chance? Okay, we'll proceed. Thank you.
Kurt Alstott, 8231 Crown Point Drive in Westminster, Colorado. I have farmed this property since I was seven. It's a little bit hard to see it get developed, but at any rate, it's what the church has decided. Over the last few decades, it has been a change of season for the church farm and dairy operation it once had. The dairy operation became very challenging to continue when other farms selling land for development. We ended up selling the land in the 60s, late 60s. That dairy was at 92nd and Pecos in Federal Heights, and now loaded with trailers. After we sold the dairy, the crops have been sold to help with our Christian schools, radio stations, and churches, et cetera. In my lifetime, the church has sold property for the good of the community, including some of the following. Maybe you knew, maybe you didn't. Random High School, Gregory Hill School, the academy, Crown Point Academy fell later, that was our property, our own school, St. Anthony's North Hospital, numerous parks, one of the hydro pillar tanks, and two ground tanks for Westminster Water Supply at 82nd and Lowell, roughly. We have maintained the farm, some of this property, for 100 years. With the increased price of farm equipment, fuel, labor, and more, it has become difficult to finance the small acreage. The Board of Trustees had decided to refocus on our other ministries other than our farming. Therefore, the church will be keeping somewhere around 100 acres, just a little under, of campus for future operation and vision. That was what I wrote down here for you guys tonight, ladies. There was a couple of questions here that I think I can answer for you, if you'd like me to do that. One of which, somebody mentioned, I think, Richard, you might have, about the water. And we are a dryland farm. That's what we've been. Over the years, years ago, down by Random High School, where the ditch comes through, we did irrigate some down there because it was gravity feed. We do irrigate our campus. We've got ditch rights, Farmers High Line Canal and Reservoir. Those are all going to stay with our campus. They were not on this property we're talking today, so I just wanted to answer that, that question, or that comment about that. We also, not that this had come up, but we also have our own wells and treat our own water. We are not part of Westminster's water system, and have been since 1919, when we started. Anyway, those are my comments for tonight, and I, I guess I am in favor of the last person that talked here, but we're definitely looking forward to development there, as well as to feed our school, because we need, we need more people and children in our school as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica is up, followed by David Senke and Michael Lazar.
Hi, Jessica True, 7488 Bradburn Boulevard. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the approval of the Uplands project proposed for this site. As one of the organizers of the water recall last year, and a community activist, I just want to point out something off my notes here, which is that we're talking about housing and how there's a housing crisis. And we have talked to 600, 6,700 voters or more in the last year, and people cannot afford to stay in their homes. I talked to a lady two days ago who was selling her house because she can't afford water here. We have people who are getting water bills far in excess of their mortgage. So this notion that, that, you know, when they first, when they first did this water rate increase in 2018, they told us it was over conservation. Then they told us it was over infrastructure. Bottom line for the community is stop building, stop building on the backs of the people who are here. People can't afford water. They can't afford, it's, it's necessary for life. And if we don't have, if we can't afford water in our own community, then we can't afford water for these people. And I, I resent the comments that only the rich people from the neighborhood are here. Richest people are here. Those are the richest people in this room, and we have been volunteers for a year trying to right a wrong, and, and it's not just the water rates, they're, they're billing us incorrectly as well. And I really appreciate this Planning Commission, because you guys actually have asked some hard questions here tonight, and it seems like you're really thinking this through. And I got to be honest, I'm surprised, because I've been to a lot of council meetings where things just look like they're getting rubber stamped. But we all live here. I have not heard one person that I can recall, and I'm sorry, I'm not a computer here, but I have heard very few people speak in favor of this project tonight, who live here, who actually live even in our city. Stop talking to me about all the people who we have to house. If the people who are here cannot afford water to live, I have spoken to senior citizens who can't afford medication because they can't afford their water. We have people living in apartments that their water bill is We have people living in apartments that their water bill is $100 for an apartment. How much time I have? And now I will pivot slightly back to a couple of other things. As a procedural matter, I think it is wrong that this was brought in this way to the Planning Commission. This long list of approvals, it's like Christmas for Uplands right now. Why are we rushing this? Why? I mean, why are we rushing this in this meeting? And they don't have C.D.O.S. signed off on this. They keep saying, oh, well, we're in discussions with them. Well, discuss all you want. And when you get to an answer where they say that you're doing the right thing, let us know. Secondly, the Mile High Legislature hasn't approved this. And as someone who owns a house directly down the hill from this property, I'm concerned. Sloan Lake just had a toxic algae bloom because of uncontrolled runoff from construction sites. The whole neighborhood has been under construction for 10 years. And the city is doing a terrible job of managing their own properties, much less managing someone else's construction site. I went through downtown the other day, the new downtown, and it's, you know, five-foot-tall weeds, all these unfinished projects. They're not managing, no one is managing the managers. And I'm sorry if I seem really angry tonight, but I don't like having to do this. I mean, we shouldn't be talking to 6,700 people who can't afford water. And then they tell us, oh, well, there's enough water now. Oh, okay, well, it seems to kind of go back and forth depending on what they want to get done that day because sometimes we have not enough water. My bill says we don't have enough water. And they've been driving down consumption because no one can afford the water. Come down to Harris Park where I live. No one is watering down there. We are losing all of our mature trees this year because we've had two rainstorms since July. These plans, the comprehensive plan they're referring to, is from 2013. We can't pass this garbage comprehensive plan. There's no support for it in the community. It's garbage. I mean, honestly, we've lost a lot of people and the staff in this city, and we should lose some people from the Planning Department next. Thank you.
Thank you.
David is up, followed by Michael, and then JB Chavez.
Good evening. My name is David Sinkey, 712 Main Street, Louisville, Colorado. I'm a past resident of the city of Westminster, and I am the president of Boulder Creek Neighborhoods. I'm here to speak-
Excuse me, can we start the timer? Thanks.
I'm here to speak in favor of the Uplands Community Development Plan and urge the Planning Commission to approve the questions before you tonight. At Boulder Creek Neighborhoods, our mission is to add to the diversity of the housing stock. Since 2006, we've built over 2,000 homes across the Front Range of Colorado, and all of them have been designed to appeal to the non-typical suburban family. For many years, we focused primarily on the lack of housing options for seniors and empty nesters. We've developed a reputation for building innovative, single-level homes that feature access-enhancing, universal design, low-maintenance materials, low-water usage, and high-energy efficiency. While I remain very dedicated to this type of targeted senior housing in Westminster, I'm here tonight to provide you with my perspective on what has become known as missing middle housing. At any given time, we are building eight to 10, eight to 12 communities on the Front Range, which means we have a nearly constant stream of potential homebuyers coming through our sales centers. What we keep hearing is a desire for something in the middle, not a large, single-family home, and not a mid-rise apartment. Due to a particularly onerous construction defect environment in Colorado, condos are hard to come by. And there really is a lack of options in the middle. The average size of a newly constructed, single-family home has grown significantly in the last several decades. In the 1950s, new homes averaged 950 square feet. Today, they now average twice that size. In 2018, we announced that we would be building 34 We Cottage Homes in Denver. We Cottage Homes, pardon me, We Cottage Homes that can be built as small lot, single-family, duplex, or triplex homes. They range in size from 950 to 1,400 square feet. And I can honestly tell you that we were nervous when we brought these to the market. The homebuilding industry decided years ago that a new, single-family home had to have a two-car garage, a five-piece master bath, two to three bedrooms, and a fenced backyard. We were worried that prospective buyers would react negatively when we revealed the details of these new homes. The opposite was true. To our surprise, local media ran news stories and TV news segments about the attainable-by-design homes. And within 10 days, we had over 700 people on an interest list for 34 homes. Those homes are now built and occupied, and we've had the opportunity to learn from those who purchased homes as well as those who signed up but were not given the chance to purchase one of those homes. By far, the most significant takeaway was the broad diversity of buyers looking for missing-middle housing options. It did not fit the standard definition of single-family. We sold homes to seniors, singles and families, empty nesters and never nesters, men and women who were divorced or never married, and, as you would expect, first-time homebuyers. These were the adult kids of people who lived in the community. We Cottage was the missing middle, middle-sized, middle-priced housing option that was and continues to be in short supply. We've gone on to offer hundreds of these new homes in other communities, and the response has been the same. We could share, I could share with you story after story of grateful and relieved people who were finally able to find an option that worked for them. We Cottage is only a small part of the equation when it comes to addressing the issue of missing middle housing. But it is a proven start. At Boulder Creek, we are actively looking to be a part of forward-looking projects like Uplands, where considerable thought is given to walkable, tree-lined streets that are fronted with porches and storefronts, not garage doors. I believe this diverse infill project will help to revitalize surrounding commercial property while giving existing residents of Westminster a new and much-needed housing option. To that end, I encourage you to approve the annexation and zoning questions before you tonight. My colleagues and I at Boulder Creek look forward to working with the master plan developer, staff, Planning Commission, City Council, and, most importantly, neighbors to bring this vision to life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael is up, followed by JB Chavez and Lauren Hanson.
Good evening. My name is Michael Lazar. I'm now a resident of Broomfield. I used to live in Torrey Peaks, moved into Westminster back in 2008, and I'm just a couple of miles north. And I still maintain a lot of ties with the city of Westminster. I work very closely with the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. Also, I'm a lawyer based out of Denver, but a significant number of my clients are based up here in Westminster, and I work with a number of different Westminster businesses on various things. And so I still consider myself very much a part of the Westminster community. And so I say that because I do support the Uplands project. And let me preface my support by saying the following. I'm a good example of the problem that Westminster is facing. I came from California out to Colorado back in 2005 because California was overconstructed. It was really expensive. And frankly, I just saw no future for myself there. So I moved out here for school, decided it was a really awesome place to stay, settled in the Westminster area. And I've been here ever since. Started a family here, started a life here, and this is where I choose and this is where I want to be. There are thousands and thousands of people from California, from other parts of the country, who are making the very same decision than I did. And so we have a housing crisis because of that. We have more and more people moving out here. And the reason why I want to bring that up is because I hear the current residents. I hear their complaints about the increased water prices. I hear the complaints about housing becoming unaffordable. But the part that I want to focus on is this, is that these are larger market forces that no single project is going to fix, period. All we can do is help to make things better. That's the only thing that the city of Westminster can do. And so we can chip away at the margins by building new housing projects, such as the Uplands community, that serves these underdeveloped and these underserviced segments of our market. And I want to close by hitting on a comment that was made by one of the earlier speakers today, where he asked, what's the opportunity cost if the city of Westminster says no to the Uplands project? I mean, I've looked very carefully at the Uplands project. I've looked at the pictures. I've looked at the plans. I've talked with Jeff. I've talked with Chad. And it's a beautiful project. It's a great development. This is land that has always been slated for development. This is land for which water has been allocated for development. It's been allocated for decades. So if not this, then what? What is going to be the development? What is going to be acceptable? It has to be something. And if not the Uplands developers, then who? They have spent years carefully cultivating ties with everybody, with, you know, every interested party in the city of Westminster. They have reached out to chambers, to politicians, to staff, to community members, to business members. They have formed a formidable network, and I cannot think of a better partner for the city to work with in terms of building this particular development. And so for all of these reasons, I urge the commission to find that, or to recommend to the city, that the Uplands project be approved and to further find that this project is in the best interest of the city of Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you.
JB Chavez, followed by Lauren Hanson, and then Ian Godsey.
Good evening. My name is JB Chavez. I used to live in 8591 Low Boulevard. That means across the street from the cornfield. I sold my house a couple of months ago. I've been living in Westminster for about eight years, four kids. My kids, they went to elementary, middle school, high school. They're already gone. College, they move on. So it was a good investment. I sold my house. One of the dreams that I was, is actually wake up, open my door, cross the street, and work. That would have been perfect. Normally, I have to drive two, three, four hours to work. I wouldn't save all that time. I can spend that time with my family. That time is lost. This project is taking too long. I'll move on. But I've been spoken with my wife. I'm actually for about 30 years, but we love the city. And I'm actually going to be one of the buyers that actually going to buy one of the properties in Uplands. So that means if I can live on the place where I'm going to work, that would be perfect. One of the things that I heard from the people that have been talking here, it's the comments about the park dedication. But each of the speakers that decided on the park statistics, they say, "We will rather not have development." That means no parks dedication. That means no new parks. In all of these residents, we still not have parks amenities. This is a false argument, and it's only being used to reinforce anti-development strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Lauren Hanson, followed by Ian Godsey and Jessica Preston.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Hanson. I'm a member of Yumi Denver, a fellow multimodal activist as a lot of the other supportive speakers have been. And I'd just like to echo the sentiment of earlier speakers that spoke in support of the project as being an important transit-oriented development, particularly being close to bus stops along Federal and being close to two light rail stations, which, just to append what some of the speakers have said, are within a 20-minute bike ride to the Westminster station and a roughly 35-minute bike ride into the station along the G-line. I'm supportive of this project because I'm supportive of more modes and more mobility and building out a more bikeable Westminster and a more bikeable Front Range. And given that it's roughly 10 o'clock now, and I don't want to echo any statistics or sentiments that people had before, I'll yield the rest of my time. And thank you very much again for speaking, letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay, Ian?
Jennifer, if I might ask, how many more speakers do you have signed up?
We are a little more than halfway through. That's in-person. We have eight virtual that are holding on the line, if you will, and 20-plus voicemails.
Okay, let's see if we can get through them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ian Godsey, and I'm a resident of Westminster. I live off one of the Stewart Streets, Courts, whatever. Just don't want to be too specific. I am a business owner here in Westminster. I have a startup that I just started that I actually came up with the idea of a paper that I wrote at Front Range Community College and is actually doing very, very well. And now I have a problem scaling up and actually hiring people and attracting people to come to the company. And one of the biggest issues is housing. And I have to convince my board that I want to stay here in Westminster while they suggest we move to Boulder, and I do not want to move to Boulder. All right? So we need to have housing of multiple kinds with different types of people who don't, you know, who, you know, starting their lives, you know, just moved here, have other ways of lives that are different from everybody else. It's just how they are. We should support this project because it does provide different types of housing for different people. And I would be remiss if I didn't use this time to say I support Nikola Jokic, and it's a travesty that he was suspended one game for getting cheap-shotted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lots of opinions.
Okay, Jessica Preston is up next, followed by Rob Hamm, and Jackie Lombardi will be third.
Thank you, guys, for listening to several opinions tonight. I think it's important that you guys get recognized for that because there are several. I am Jessica Preston. I have owned a home in Westminster since 2015. I previously worked in Westminster at the Doubletree. I am actually now a licensed real estate agent, and I have been for four years this December. I am here, obviously, because there is a huge housing crisis, which everyone knows. I'm in, I agree with this. I want this to pass. Sorry, I'm also pregnant, so I have a little bit of pregnancy brain. I apologize. I work a lot with first-time homebuyers. And when you talk with first-time homebuyers, several of them don't have high-paying jobs, and they can't afford the average home price, which, over the last 12 months in the city of Westminster, was right around $500,000. Many of those homebuyers don't make that kind of money. They can't afford that. And so they have the choice of renting or choosing to purchase middle-income homes, like condos or things like that. The average on the census for the household income, excuse me, the median for the household income was $76,000. And if you do some rough math, you can afford approximately a $275,000 home. You can't find those here. And so these people that are making the money in the city have to go elsewhere. They are going elsewhere to purchase homes. And when they leave, you buy your groceries near your house. Those sales tax dollars go directly back to the city. Your water bill that everybody is complaining about, if you share that load with more people, it may not prevent it from, you know, increasing over time because that's what happens with development, but it may help that slow down, right? If you don't develop, if you don't bring more people to share the tax burden, you're going to have to pay more in taxes. And so I urge people to think about the economic impact that this development could have because I think it could be a great change for the city. And I think it can make a huge difference to those people that fall under thresholds, that can't afford $500,000, $600,000, $800,000 houses. I urge you guys to look at this and to pass it because I think it's important to have more housing available and not just single-family homes, but multi-use homes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to reiterate that when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address. State whether you agree or disagree with the previous speaker and only continue if you have new information so that we can try and get through all this testimony tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rob Hamm, followed by Jackie Lombardi and Karen Calaviti. I'm so sorry if I didn't get that quite right.
Hello there, Planning Commission. My name is Rob Hamm, and I'm a Westminster resident living at 11475 Chase- My name's Rob Hamm, and I'm a Westminster resident living at 11475 Chase Way. I have a lot of things in here to say, but, you know, I want you to know for some form of reason, I stand in agreeance with the previous speaker. I rise in strong support of Uplands, and I want the Planning Commission to uphold provisions for this site that were first spelled out in the 2013 comp plan. This privately-owned land has been intended for many years to provide desperately-needed housing, and it's especially significant that this proposed plan would build less housing than is called for in the comp plan. It's a medium-density community of approximately 10 units per acre, and it will go a long way toward helping our housing crisis here. As a fifth-generation Boulder County, Colorado native, I can uniquely attest to the impact of having limited supply of housing within the Highway 36 corridor, and how that affects affordability for locals to buy and/or rent in the community. The no-growth policies that we see in the community just to the north of us, not to say which one that is, on surface seem good. Don't grow, keep the look and feel of the community the way it was when I moved here, and everyone will be happy. Well, the cost in this scenario is those blue-collar individuals and families, in most cases... Oh, I'm sorry. The cost of that is the blue-collar... Can't read my own writing here. And in most cases, when there is an increase in demand for housing matched with a policy that doesn't want to increase supply of housing, the only outcome is the price for housing will increase. That is exactly what has happened to my family and those like me. We were priced out by a city and a county's policies that we grew up in. The reality is that there is a massive increase in population demand for housing within the Westminster area, and if the Planning Commission is serious about housing affordability, the solution is to increase the supply of housing, then prices will allow families like mine to remain within Westminster for longer than one generation. I have a bunch of things I could say here about water, but I know that they have already been spoken about. And so basically, I want to conclude with, I think we should support housing projects that can help people live closer where they work and play, and we should especially support projects that model best practices in water conservation and sustainability, like the Uplands. In approving the Uplands development, Westminster will become a model city for the area on how to partner with market-provided housing solutions while also demonstrating a conscious effort to limit the impact on our resources. So with that, I would hope that you guys would pass this development. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Jackie is up, followed by Karen and Jilly Jennings.
Hi, my name is Jackie Lombardi. I live at 1216 East 28th Street, Denver. I was compelled to speak tonight for many reasons. I'm a lifelong, third-generation resident of Colorado. My grandpa still lives about 15 minutes away, and I'm also a 24-year-old young adult who has watched my rent increase at a staggering rate every time I re-sign a lease. I have friends and peers who work across a variety of sectors, including medical, tech, and the service industry, you name it, and I've watched them struggle to find decent housing within their means, many of no choice but to live with their parents. Personally, I would love to live in a city like Westminster. I've heard a lot of comments in the audience tonight saying, "People from outside the city should not be here, we shouldn't have a say." Well, I don't live here because I can't afford to. You were lucky enough to buy a home here a long time ago, when it was a lot more affordable, and that doesn't mean that because I grew up in a different time, I didn't have that opportunity, that my opinion should matter less. The city is dominated by unsustainable and unaffordable, single-family-zoned houses. It's not accessible to young professionals like me, let alone anyone who needs something more affordable. Earlier, I think the applicant mentioned that the median rent for a one-bedroom in Westminster is upwards of $1,600 a month. Financial advisors overwhelmingly agree that your rent should be about 30% of your income to maintain financial health. I have a bachelor's degree, I've worked in professional-salaried jobs for more than three years since graduating, and that Westminster median rent is still over the 30% of my income benchmark. Now imagine what that median rent would be like for my peers, who are nurses, EMTs, restaurant servers, and make less than me. After paying rent, they would have nothing left, so obviously, this city needs more affordable housing. Personally, I would love to live in a community like Uplands, which is more sustainable than the homes most of the residents here live in. Additionally, I would be ecstatic to live within a 10-minute walk to a park. Connecting workforce and affordable housing to trailheads and parks is the definition of equitable access to open space. Protecting an empty privately-owned lot is not. These residents claim that blocking this project will be bad for the environment and worsen the heat island effect. Part of my job is to research nature-based solutions and climate change in urban environments. What really isn't good for the environment is making it impossible for people to live within a walkable community and forego a car. And you know what's proven to actually help the heat island effect? New trees and vegetation, like the 2,500 new trees this developer has committed to planting in more than 40 acres of what will be public land. In the event, the residents opposing this project will greatly benefit from Uplands. $70 million in new taxes and fees going to the schools their children attend, for example. I don't have children, I would love for my tax dollars to go towards your schools and benefit your children. Infrastructure investments, economic stimulation, you've all seen the numbers. This isn't some skiva developer who wants to cut corners and make money. They've gone above and beyond with this proposal. Council, I encourage you to make Westminster the leader in sustainable housing that Colorado so desperately needs. Set an example for the Front Range and the metro area, and please consider how approving this project will pave the way for young adults like me to join your community and brighten the future of this city. We are struggling, and this is how you can help. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like at this time to ask if commissioners would like to take a short recess. Okay, we're going to recess for 10 minutes. We will be back here at 10:23. Okay, I'd like to reconvene this meeting. Let's continue the in-person testimony. Jennifer, who was up next?
Karen is up next, followed by Jilly Jennings and Tina Franconi. Francone?
Hello, my name is Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway here in Westminster. And I've been a resident of Westminster now for 11 years, and even And even before, when I lived in Denver, I would go past that Westminster farm and just admire the fact that all this beautiful wheatland and open space was part of Westminster's character. I mean, it's part of Westminster to have this large expanse of wheat farming. And I know we had the person who does the farming said he's a little tired of it. It doesn't necessarily have to be that same person. But when we're talking about the environment, we need also to consider that during climate change situations, we really need to set aside at least 30% of our lands to become a resilient community. And that means 30% of our lands that are not built upon, 30% of our lands that are left as open space or parks is really necessary for a resilient community and a resilient century of things to come. So when I hear these so-called environmentalists come and say that we should build that out so that it could become a walkable community, all I can think is, we have a new downtown that is sitting there, ready to be a walkable community if we put any energy into that, instead of spreading the energy onto a piece of land that has not been developed. And people speak that it was always set to be developed. Well, when did that happen? In the 1800s? I mean, I'm a Unitarian, I'm not evangelical, but I do believe in God and what was created. And when we say it was always meant to be developed, it was like, well, who always wanted to be developed? Since the 1800s, the people who came in. That is left to be undeveloped, if that's what we choose for it to be. And in this, like I said, in this day of climate change, that is better suited, our community is better suited to leave a big swath of undeveloped land and then focus our attention on the property at the Westminster downtown or even the transit center, which has transportation already lined up for it right near the transit center, rather than bringing in buses. You know, I've taken the 31 bus along Federal. It goes very infrequently. It's not a good transportation route. And I've even talked to some of the RTD people about that, about picking up the service routes. Anyway, I am very opposed to this development. There's no need for it at this location.
Thank you.
Next is Jilly Jennings, followed by Tina Franconi. Francone?
And Amy Van Court.
I don't see anyone queued up. Jilly, are you here with us? Okay, I'll come back to you. Tina?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tina Francone. I live at 7606 South Newland Street, Littleton, Colorado. I'm here tonight as a member of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce in support of this project. Just five points. I know it's late and I appreciate your patience. There were comments made earlier this evening about no public access to open space. With respect to that, there's no access now. So this argument is misleading. And in addition to that, Uplands has made careful consideration about open space and devoting area to that in this project. And so for that reason, Uplands satisfies that requirements and you should approve. Secondly, you can't just have residential development. You also need a commercial base in order to have a thriving community here. Uplands has had careful consideration about how to plan this community and to add these components to this project. Uplands satisfies this requirement and you should approve. I'm a former RTD director. And this area, Westminster, all the way up to Boulder and all those areas superior in between. I'm aware of the transportation needs. I also sit on, I'm a member of the Transportation and Mobility Community Advisory Team for Westminster. Careful consideration has been given to the transportation needs. Uplands satisfies this requirement and you should approve. As a former Jefferson County Commissioner, I know that if a project is in compliance with the Community Master Plan and if it really satisfies those, that careful, thoughtful, professional consideration that's been given by your staff, you should approve. For all these reasons, this is a good project and I urge your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Amy Van Court, followed by Brian Dias and then John Palmer.
Good evening. I am mostly in agreement with the previous comments. I want to start by saying, well, I'm going to give you my address and then you'll know why I'm up here. 8100 La Place Court. So my dad was a major real estate appraiser in Denver and the Colorado area for many years. And he had a saying that the real estate market has a 10-year cycle and we have a nine-year memory. So when I hear concerns and freak out about the housing crisis, it's a true thing that may not be true 10 years from now. So we have to be thinking about this in a more, I like to say, more even-handed way. I think that development is a given. And I think that if this is going to get developed, I have attended most of the Uplands meetings that I've known about. I've liked what I've heard. I've liked the way that the Westminster City people have conducted themselves. And mostly I'm in favor. And I do think about the opportunity cost if we said no to this and then at some point had to say yes to something else. I have one big concern. I live at 8100 La Place Court. La Place Court, if you look at the map, is a direct line to Parcel B. I've brought this up in every meeting. I'm a squeaky wheel. Right now, we already have a ridiculous amount of traffic disobeying a one-way street up La Place Court. The speed limit is 20 miles an hour. People are goring 40 and 50 miles an hour up that hill. The reason why we have the silly opposite one-way streets, one-way designations along there was to stop through traffic on La Place Court. It's already a problem. What's it going to be like when Parcel B is built? I've asked for this to get addressed. It's not getting addressed. Getting minor tweaks, weird roads putting in, you know, being put in on Bradburn. What we're getting isn't going to work. We have one chance to get this one part right. Please help us get it right. Because if we don't, I will continue to squeak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian is next, followed by John Palmer and Pasquale. And Pasquale, we'll need our translator if you can be on cue for us. Thank you. Brian, I don't see anybody getting up. Brian, are you with us? Is that Pasquale? Okay, we'll go ahead and, since he's approaching, go ahead and join him. Thank you. John, if you don't mind, we're going to let Mr. Pasquale go first.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Yo estoy apoyando este proyecto el 100%.
I support this project 100%.
Ha habido muchos comentarios. Oh, perdón. Mi nombre es Pasqual Carrillo. Mi dirección es 8801 Lowell Boulevard.
My name is Pasqual Carrillo. My address is 8801 Lowell Boulevard.
Yo he estado en ese negocio por 22 años.
And my business is the Hill Store. And I've been in that business for 22 years.
Yo sé más lo que pasa en esa área, en esa esquina. Hay muchas cosas.
I know more about what's happening on that corner. There's many things.
Y mantener ese terreno allí no trae ningún beneficio.
And it is of no benefit for us to keep that land there without doing anything to it.
Primeramente, miro a los niños. Eso es muy importante. Miro a los niños caminando por la calle.
And this is really important. I see the kids walking down the street.
Es muy peligroso para los niños. Los miro yo.
Too dangerous for them. I see them walking.
No hay sidewalks.
There's no sidewalk?
Los niños no entienden que tienen que caminar con sidewalk.
The children don't understand that they need to walk on a sidewalk.
No, no más los niños en la 84 Avenida en Lowell, personas caminando por la calle, no hay banquetas ahí.
And not just children, I mean, for Lowell, there are even older people. They're walking on the street because there's no sidewalks there.
Este proyecto se me hace muy beneficiario para la ciudad.
I find this project to be very beneficial for the city.
Y la otra razón, la gente o personas no entienden sobre ese terreno, ¿quién lo limpia? Esa es mi pregunta yo. ¿Alguien va y limpia la basura? ¿Que todo mundo tira allí?
And something that people don't understand about this lot. I mean, who goes and cleans it? Do these people go and clean? Who picks up the garbage that's there on that lot?
Si este proyecto no se aprueba, es muy bonito el proyecto.
And if this project is not approved, and I think it's a very beautiful project.
Vamos a mantener ese terreno por años ahí.
So it is going to keep that land there without doing anything to it for years?
Si alguien me puede contestar, ¿quién limpia ese terreno ahí cuando tiran basura?
And anyways, can somebody answer? Does somebody have an answer for me? Who cleans that land when people throw trash up there?
Yo creo que nadie puede contestar eso. No hay vecinos que puedan decir, yo limpie ese terreno de ahí. Yo estoy limpiando.
I think there's nobody's an answer to that. I don't think there's a single neighbor around there that can say, oh yeah, I cleaned.
Mi última cosa que quiero. Yo tuve que, voy a hablar un poquito sobre las casas. Yo tuve que comprar casa a una hora de aquí, de Westminster. Tengo que manejar una hora.
Something about these houses, you know, I had to buy a house that's an hour away from Westminster. I have to drive an hour to get to it.
Me pueden preguntar por qué.
You may ask why.
Es lo que todo el mundo está comentando sobre que no hay propiedades aquí en, suficientes propiedades, perdón, aquí en, se puede decir en todo Denver, Westminster.
And just like everyone's saying, there's not enough properties, not enough properties here in Denver, Westminster.
Por eso es lo que yo estoy apoyando este proyecto el 100%. Gracias.
That's why I support this project 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing this slight detour, Mr. Palmer. You can approach after. I'm sorry?
I said with objection.
Oh, the slight detour? Okay, I apologize. I think he heard his name and just assumed to come up. And so there was a little miscommunication there. I apologize. But thank you for being patient. The next speaker after John will be.
No, 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 we need to restart this. I can't be.
Oh, I didn't hit start. It's just.
It's down to 4:29.
I'm trying to stop it. There we go. It stopped. After John will be Don Voak. I'm sorry if that's wrong. And then Donna Workheiser. And I'm going to circle back to Lance, if you're anywhere in the building and would like to speak. And then Mary, and I'm sorry, Mary, I cannot read your last name. You will be our final speaker, in-person speaker. Go ahead, John.
Again, we're not at five minutes. It says four minutes and 27 seconds. Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to tell you that I'm definitely opposed to this project. Let's put it this way. Uplands is a pig. We'll circle back to that later. Several concerns are, first off, the red flags from CDOT that have not been addressed and not signed off on. The Maui flood district, same thing, red flags have not been signed off on. Traffic, let's talk about traffic. They're going to come in here and talk about peak hour traffic. Let's talk about totality of traffic. Okay, in October of 2020, they did a survey on Lowell, a traffic survey, on Lowell midway between Shaw and 88th. At that point, we were at 6,146 cars a day. As recently as September of this year, a traffic study done, 7,111 cars a day. That's a 15% increase in less than a year. So by adding additional residents in the neighborhood, what's that projected down the road? Okay, and they're going to talk about using their 2017 book, heath is. I'm sorry, that's all he has to use. But in my opinion, using a 2017 document, data book, is like using 2017 data on COVID in today's world. It's outdated, it's not applicable. All right, let's go on and talk about this project being under the 2013 plan. It speculates that at buildout 2035, 129,000 people. And I'm just going to round these numbers off for easy math. Current population is approximately 118,000 people. So that leaves us with 11,000 potential residents between now and 2035. Now, if you use Uplands at 2350 times the 2.58 per the charter, that's about 6,000 residents. So if you take 6,000 away from the 11,000, now we're left with 5,000 residents till buildout. And that doesn't take into account the current projects that you've approved or ongoing. Okay? Putting more than 6 people, excuse me, putting more than 6,000 people on this property is like putting a city the size of Estes Park, Brush, Edgewater, Vale, all on a 234-acre piece of property. Doesn't make sense. Not having real information for Parcells A, C, and D, or the other half of B as far as plotting of the land, it's like giving these people a blank check. Unacceptable. Every project I've seen come before you, things have been spelled out. Where the houses are, what the distances are. Not just this block and 114 residents, or this block. It doesn't make sense. Water shortage. Sarah Burgess has said, when Stanley's 100% full, we're 10% short. I do hope that you all read the 400-plus pages of public comments and that saw that more than 95% of them are against this project. So I do hope you all read them. Let's circle back to the pig, okay? Just real quickly. This project's a pig. I don't care how you look at it and what you call it. No matter how you dress it up, no matter how much lipstick you put on it, it's still a pig. It doesn't fit, it doesn't work. It's unacceptable to the neighbors. The flood plan, that also entails what's happening to the people on Shaw and how that's going to burden them with extra insurance or potential home value loss if that's not addressed. Also, we'd like to know that Shaw diagonal, Shaw Boulevard diagonal from Lowell till the top of the hill, it appears that we're just giving that to Uplands? There's no cash in lieu of, no nothing? Nothing mentioned of that. We're just granting that to them. How can we give away property? How can the planning department just give away a street and that much property with no compensation? I'd like to know what exceptions they are being asked for. I'd also like to know how much total cash in lieu the city is receiving for this whole project and what the cash in lieu is for, or where it's being dedicated from. Also, the lack of police and fire currently.
Sir?
Sir, you need to wrap up quickly.
I will. Currently, at projections of 118,000, we should have 283 officers onboard. We're well short of that. At 118, we should have 117 fire official or firemen. We don't have that either. This will create an added burden on an already stressed first responder system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Don, followed by Donna and Mary.
I have a neutral position on this project. I do, where there was no addressing of the Bradburn Drive Road. What are we going to do with it? It's very narrow. People try to walk down. It's very dangerous for people walking their dogs and so forth. But they have not addressed it. Who is going to address Bradburn Drive? I overlooked this Section B. Oh, I forgot to give you my address. Don Volk, 3880 West East Second Avenue, resident of Westminster, 63 years, and Observatory Heights to Subdivis. Okay, sorry about that. So we're still addressing Bradburn Drive. Nobody's talked about it. I hear screeching and yelling and 60 mile an hour cars going down already. What if we put in all these people in B, and there's only one exit out of B onto Bradburn Drive? They already told us about that. That's not going to work. Well, I said, we're going to like another one, but we're going to block off that section. And we won't use it. It'll be just for emergencies. That's not going to work. You and I own it. So I think there's a lot of flaws that we're talking about tonight with these people. And I don't think we need to really, we need to stress what we want to do with our property, where I live in. I'll be overlooking that. I overlooked the water tanks when they went in. They parked trucks on my property. Well, they're building the water tanks. These people might do the same. Who knows? So I'm going to wrap up early because I don't need to take all the time. The things have already been said, the water rights. We only got 20 years of water. Now, remember that. A very close chief engineer of City of Westminster, who was nameless, who I met for all those years building those tanks, he said, we're running out of water. 20 years, Westminster's kaput. There will be no water left for the people of Westminster. And I lived through the 1958 water problem. So with that, I'm going to close and let you people decide what sort of section you're going to take out for the people of Westminster. Many powers.
Thank you.
Next up is Donna. She's left. Okay, thank you. Mary, that brings us to you, our final speaker, in-person speaker.
Okay, I got it. I want to say that, first of all, we need a vote of the people. This is too great if we're going to double the population in this community to decide just by a few people or a few people at several meetings. That is not representative government. We haven't been explained all the consequences of this. And if 88th, as I saw in the picture up there, doesn't have increased traffic lanes, it still was two lanes in that picture, that is not sustainable. It is also not sustainable to think that people are going to get on a bus and go to work and not have plenty of parking and plenty of access to transportation, which is the most efficient, the least effective, I mean, the most effective, because our cars are pretty much clean these days, okay, but they spray the skies judicial, I mean. Anyway, we see the spraying of the skies, what they're doing to the skies, the streaks of this. And so if we're so concerned about the air quality and everything, we ought to address the UN Agenda 21 that's spraying our skies. It creates weather fronts, et cetera. But related to this green issue, I think that it's very important that you don't create hell on earth by such dense housing. Some of these units and some of these other housing projects are 400 square feet to live in. And then they have, like at the new Westminster Mall, or whatever we call it, we spent 45 million, well, 40 million bucks to buy the land, I mean, without a vote of the people, 5 million to manage it, and then more and more. And look at, I would say, the very disappointing, very disappointing property there. So I don't think it's been planned well. I don't think it's a vote of the people represented at all. There's also something that is critical about why we have housing shortage. It's because of a Colorado state law of construction defects. It puts out small builders big time. Maybe a stock exchange home builder can stay in there. But we have, through government regulation in the state of Colorado, put so many people out of work, out of business because of needless regulation. There are reasons to have construction defect lawsuits, but it's not by the law that we have certainly enforced now. It is not affordable to put people in small units and expect other people to pay the bill. The people that have lived here for decades, I moved to this area in 1959, and I moved back and forth, but I've come home for many decades. And the point of the story is for you to build three, four, and five-story buildings, and those pictures don't show the effect of what that is. You're not looking at how unhappy you will make the people who've lived here for a long time and who paid the bills. So I think that it's not well thought out, and certainly this deserves a vote of no confidence because the details aren't planned. And if we don't know how many people are going to live here, because we don't know how the size of the units are going to be, you can't know what the water availability is going to be really to satisfy, or many other things. So I think you need to slow down. It's way too big. If you want to modify it, I think you ought to really take a look at that because this is way too dense for this area. And you will be making, this is just wrong, okay? And you want to do something out of integrity and not just because it's politically expedient, or all the people, most all the people, I'd say 90% of the people here would benefit, who've spoken for it, are either on payroll or their jobs connected to this. So most of the people are against it who live here, and that is what, that's who pays the bill. So I think that, slow down, okay? Slow down. This is not ready to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have finished the in-person testimony, and now we will do voicemails.
Virtual?
Virtual.
Okay. We will begin our virtual speakers. The first speaker this evening is Brad Evans. Brad, I will be unmuting you, and your five minutes will begin. Brad, you can unmute yourself. Brad, are you able to hear us?
There we go. Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm here. I appreciate all the members of the Planning Commission hearing this testimony today from everybody. This is a unique opportunity for Westminster to become a leader in 21st century sustainable development. I was invited into the, this project came into on my radar when I got a call from the folks who are opposing this project. I am the South Platte River Water Keeper and was informed of the project by the folks who are against this. As my due diligence, I started meeting with people involved with the project and discovered what Oriad Capital was up to, was actually a really dynamic and unique project that really is taking into account what Westminster wants to become and is going to become with or without this project. Over the past few years, I've been working on a variety of projects, whether it's opposing highways or working to change things in Denver. One of the things that I think is, if you haven't been following, the Park Hill Golf Course project was recently voted in Denver as a, by the citizens of Denver to oppose some development on the project. And I think the folks who oppose this project probably, in Westminster, probably looked at that as some sort of similar project. However, it's vastly different. Park Hill Golf Course has a publicly owned conservation easement on it, owned by the taxpayers of Denver. So I think that, why I'm bringing that up is because there is no conservation easements on this property in Westminster. So I think to think that these are similar kinds of projects is somewhat of a misnomer. The other thing that I haven't heard spoken today is the success of a project in the early 2000s in Westminster, which is Bradburn Village. I have decades of real estate experience, and Bradburn has always been looked at as one of the more pivotal projects, probably in the up and down the front range in terms of livability, desirability, and, you know, the idea of walkable neighborhoods and a community that was built for people in a city like Westminster. So I hope you guys can take a look at, you know, this project. I look at this map that they have up on the screen right now, and I hear people complaining about density. And it's compared to what's surrounding this project that Uplands is proposing is far more dense. So I think the idea of adding this kind of maintained open space that's usable is really like a great thing for Westminster. So I hope you'll approve this project and move it on to the city council so that Westminster can enjoy the fruits of a project of this scope and scale that will benefit the front range for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, if you could come back on and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much. My name is Brad Evans. My address is 15575 West LaSalle Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado.
Thank you. And a reminder to those virtual speakers that will be joining us, if you could please state your name and address for the record when you are called upon. The next speaker will be Peter Lefari. Again, I'm sorry if I've mispronounced that. I will be unmuting you here momentarily, Peter, and you should be able to unmute and speak.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. You did a great job pronouncing my last name. Thank you for that. So Peter Lefari, Maker Housing Partners, Executive Director, 3033 West 71st Avenue, Suite 1000, Westminster, Colorado, 80030. I, like the speaker before me, support the project. I want to thank the commissioners, staff, participants.
Keep your comments to yourself.
Excuse me?
He just gave his address, madam.
Yeah, should I restate the address? Was that not clear?
It doesn't say it has to be home address. It can be work address as long as they give the address. If you cannot keep quiet, you will leave this room. Do I make that clear? Thank you. Please let the man continue.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reiterate my appreciation to the commissioners, staff, participants, community members, both here and those at home. Maker, as Westminster and Adams County's housing authority exists to disrupt generational poverty through socially conscious community development with a foundation of affordable, vibrant, affordable housing, we are a owner, operator, and developer throughout Westminster, as well as the county, providing affordable housing options, really from about 80% of area median income down to zero. And so I just wanted to express our support of the project. We look forward to partnering with the Uplands team, especially the Uplands Community Collective, as shared previously. And, you know, we're late tonight, and there's been just fantastic data and discussion. And so I echo the key indicators, as shared by the Uplands team. We look forward to participating in the development of affordable housing solutions at the site. And we're very excited about the equity inclusion ethos of food justice, walkability, and opportunity. As mentioned, we are in the midst of an acute housing crisis, and that crisis ripples across the entire continuum, impacting our senior citizens as well as individuals and families just looking to start out and that would desire the vibrant and high quality of life that Westminster provides. And so, you know, I just, again, will echo our support. We hope that you provide the support tonight to the project. And I thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Duran. Matthew, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening. Matthew Duran, 13985 Craigway, Bloomfield. First, thank you, commissioners, for hanging in there tonight. First of all, I guess I'd like to address why Bloomfield residents talk about a Westminster development project. I'm currently the president of the Westminster Public Schools Education Foundation. I've been a part of the foundation for over 20 years. And I was also a former Board of Education member at Westminster Public Schools for 12 years, as well as a product of Westminster Public Schools, and I'm also a longtime Westminster Rotarian. So Westminster is very much in my blood. I'm addressing the Planning Commission to express my support for the Uplands proposal. I know that many residents, you know, if they had their way, the land would be designated as open space. But being privately owned by the church, the church wanting and needing to sell is not a reality to keep it undeveloped. And so then, with that being said, you know, then we have to look at what is being proposed and by whom. So Upland, from my, you know, when it was first brought to my attention, I did a review and research, and I personally feel that they're a very conscientious development group with successful projects here in Colorado and other parts of the country. And I feel that they'll actually do right by the city and the neighboring community. The plan presented allows for consideration of the current water situation, parks, open space, and most importantly, the affordable housing options. So I believe that the Upland group will be a strong supporter of our community, and in particular, the Westminster Public School District. I don't believe it's a question of if this land gets developed, it's a matter of when. That is why I endorse the Upland proposal, because we need to know we have a company that will be a great partner to the city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Steve Jennings.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Steve Jennings. I live at 20172 East 53rd Place in Denver. And I also want to thank the council, especially at this time of day. You guys have put together a great informative educational. I've been very impressed, so thank you. I live near the airport right now, and I like our home. It's a well-built home. But I just don't care for the location. After living here for four years, there's not as much services. And we really like Westminster. And our daughter's living with us because she lived in an apartment that was getting very expensive. And we just said, why don't you live with us, and let's put your money toward a down payment. So we looked, we found about Uplands about in 2019, followed the progress. I've gotten the opportunity to talk to some of the developers, and I try... I've gotten the opportunity to talk to some of the developers, and I trust them. I think that they have a great concept, affordable, and I agree with the previous speakers before me remotely. I think this is a needed requirement. We have big issues with affordable homes, sustainable, and energy efficiency. We, this concept, I think, has been well thought out. I think they have done a lot of due diligence. I've tried to do some research on them. I think that they're local, they're devoted, they're well experienced people. I trust that this is going to be a gem, and I think Westminster would be doing themselves a favor. I think it's a revenue generator. It's a new concept that I think could be replicated, and I'm all in favor of it. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Damon DeFabio. Damon, are you able to unmute and speak? Damon, let's give that another try.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, and good evening commissioners. My name is Damon DeFabio. My address is 4015 Perry Street, Denver, Colorado. I'm representing the Colorado Home Building Academy to share support for the Uplands project. I'm the director of the Colorado Home Building Academy, a nonprofit organization which started in 2017 in response to the ongoing need for skilled and unskilled labor in the construction industry. The Home Building Academy has a training site in Denver. We have trained people in construction that have pop-up sites all over the Denver metro region. And we also run a satellite training site in Colorado Springs. We recently partnered with Uplands to offer an introductory, introductory construction boot camp training course and a hiring fair at 845 Lowell Boulevard, right there at Davy's Locker, old Davy's Locker Bar. And we would like to offer many more on-location trainings over the next few months and years. We serve hard-to-reach youth, homeless individuals, ex-offenders, individuals looking for a career change. And we've averaged 25% women enrolled as a part of our effort to deliver diversity or to support diversity within the construction industry. We trained over 1,000 people since 2017. We will have trained 400 people by the end of 2021. And all of those graduates will obtain an industry-recognized pre-apprenticeship certificate. Most importantly, though, in the last two years, we have connected over 250 of those graduates with construction jobs. And we perform this work, not only because the construction industry has a need for labor, but also because the trades and construction careers offer an amazing pathway to employment, to a career, to upward mobility, and to greater health and well-being. The Uplands project will, without a doubt, change the landscape of the Westminster community. But it will also offer many in the community a different career options. The economic output of Upland, the Upland build-out is going to be over, over 15 years will be over around 1.8 billion. One of the results of that output will be 655 jobs created right in the Westminster community locally. That offers the local Westminster community members the opportunity to obtain a deal of those jobs. To our organization, this project seems a great opportunity for the community of Westminster. And the Colorado Home Building Academy is here to offer its expertise, helping people in this local community to retrain, reskill, or shift careers and to take advantage of the opportunity which lies ahead. We support this project. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
The next speaker that contacted us to speak online virtually is Virginia McAllister. And Virginia has not joined the meeting virtually, but I'm going to call her name out loud to let the record state that she was given an opportunity to speak. We also have another person, Adam Estroff, that requested to speak virtually but has not joined the meeting. So that takes us to our final virtual speaker, Anna Dewitt. Anna, are you, are you able to unmute yourself and speak? Please try now, Anna.
Perfect, okay. I'm sorry about that. So, good evening. My name is Anna Dewitt, 3157th Avenue. I am a Denver resident and a former Denver teacher. So why am I speaking at this Westminster hearing? Well, outside of my major concern of our country's and state's ability to make policy changes that will affect CO2 emissions, many of my former students were residents of Westminster and surrounding areas. What Westminster does not only affects the climate in Denver, in Colorado, and in the world. The housing crisis in Westminster affected my students and ultimately my job. I'm here to speak in favor of this development, and I urge you to vote in favor of this project. I actually loved the graphic the applicant showed, the one that we either have single-family or very dense buildings in our area and that we are incredibly short on missing middle housing. That graphic was great because it shows us that we're missing, we're missing middle housing. So how does that affect us, our neighbors, and overall the housing market? As someone who earns a very traditional middle income, I can tell you how hard it is, has been to simply survive in this state. Even as a single mother and on a single middle income, I earn too much to qualify for any government assistance like affordable housing. I, however, earn far too little to afford a standard home. People like me need more housing options than we can afford, housing options like this development will provide. If you really care about the lives of the teachers teaching your children, if you really care about first responders and nurses who have taken care of us during this pandemic, if you care about middle-class workers, you will vote in favor of housing that will support them. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the virtual speakers. The only piece left is the voicemails that were left in advance by the submission deadline of noon today. And we have approximately one hour's worth of voicemails.
Okay. In that case, I think I speak for the entire commission when I say we will probably continue the meeting at this time until tomorrow. But I'd like to take a quick straw poll and see if anyone here would like to continue the public hearing for another hour. I know, right? I know Commissioner Torres has requested we continue this until tomorrow. So I will, unless there's an objection, I will close this meeting with the, or I guess we need a motion? Okay, entertain a motion to continue this meeting to tomorrow at 6 o'clock?
If we could please get a motion to continue the meeting, followed by a second. And in the motion, be sure to include the date and the time that you would like the meeting to start.
Thank you.
6 o'clock, all right. I move that we continue the meeting to tomorrow, November 10, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I would like to call the question. Do we need a roll call?
Yes, please. Chair Bosscher.
In favor?
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, so we will convene tomorrow at 6:00 PM in this chamber. Thank you.